Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am calling this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast and that your board members are very thrilled about that. I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Are you recording the meeting, sir? Are you recording audio or video? Okay. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I would ask that you place any electronic device into silent mode. Hopefully, I've done the same myself so that we may all enjoy each other's company tonight. Let's start by having a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Byrne, would you be willing to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good.
Nobody's going to say play ball?
Play ball.
Play ball. All right. So we are going to be calling all the reviews. There's six of them between six and seven. I'm going to start by calling them in order. If anybody is not here, we're going to move on without having a time constraint to the next one and come back to anyone who is not here at that time. So when you, if you are called to the podium, please try to speak briefly and concisely into the questions that are asked so that we can all move along and get the agenda underway. The first matter we're calling tonight is ZBA two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two. This is four seven nine Water Street, Maitland, Ishmael, and this is for review of the special permit to reinstate a abandoned building and convert from one conforming, nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use as a two-family. Is anybody here to speak on that petition? Okay. Are you Mr. Ishmael?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next matter, and we will recall four seventy-nine Water Street. The next matter is ZBA two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen. This is Zero Airport Road, William Gleason. This is a review of a granted variance to construct a twenty-four-by-fifty steel building on a seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine square foot lot not conforming to the side yard setbacks. Mr. Gleason, are you present? Welcome. You can just please state your name and city of residence for the minutes.
William Gleason, Fitchburg, Mass.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gleason, you were granted a variance to construct a steel building on your lot. This was the landscaping service, if I remember correctly, right?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you give us an update on where you are?
I have a hole dug in the ground. I have the form part for the footing down with a rebar in it. I have the building bought, paid for a water line that cost me eleven grand, and I don't have a building permit.
Okay. Have you, so I know, you know, I'm sure that we just had a change in our building commissioner, and we have an interim building commissioner. So you have, did you have the permit for what you have done to date, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah. Did the decision get recorded at the Registry of Deeds? And was that given to the building department?
For what?
So there was a written decision issued granting you the variance that has to be recorded?
Oh, yes, yes, I did that.
Okay, great. You received that. Thanks, Mercedes. Okay. So you're waiting the issuing of the building permit at this time? Okay. I don't know then, other than that, that we could do much review on the conditions since you've dug the hole but not started the construction of the building, but I'm going to review them with you and just have you respond. Okay? So the side yard setback was to be no less than seven and a half feet on either side. I assume that there's been no change in that?
No.
Okay, good. The building to be constructed substantially according to plan, that was the Haley Ward plan. Any change in the construction that needed to happen? Okay. You have some conditions from the planning board meeting outstanding, but I believe those are related to landscaping that's going to occur, right? We did have a landscaping to be installed by November the fourteenth, but you're going to require a, an extension on that issue. The chain link fence to be of solid color and not bare metal. I assume that's going to be replaced after the construction of the building is completed?
The fence?
Yes, or painted. So it's to be solid color, not bare metal.
You said it has to be black, yet that fence is down already, so it's just an open lot right now.
Okay. So there is an offense there, but you're, but you're not, not in compliance with any color issue?
No.
Property to be kept in a clean and orderly condition with no vehicle or equipment parts or vehicle or construction debris and to be kept clean during construction. The only issue preventing you from moving forward right now is the building permit, right?
It's become a major issue.
When did you submit the recorded decision to the building department?
When did I say that again?
How long ago did you submit the recorded decision to the building department?
What is that, the thing from the Registry of Deeds?
Yes.
Well, I didn't do it myself. I have a contractor. He did it, and it was October.
Okay.
Probably mid-October.
All right. I will, after this meeting, for whatever it's worth, I will put in an email to the building commissioner asking him if he can move that forward and have the building permit issued to you.
There's a big problem with that.
Okay.
Because now it's stuck in conservation.
Okay.
And I have no idea why this is going on.
Okay. So when we have a review, we ask for any comments from departments? No, this is four seventy-nine? Yeah. And we don't have any comments on yours. Is there another? Thank you. Good thing Mercedes is here to keep us organized. The applicant has been advised to file an RDA with the Mass DEP. We are awaiting filing, and that's from the conservation agent.
I have no clue why I have to file that, none. There's no wetlands in the area. There's been attachments and an email sent from Haley Ward to this conservation person. I guess she's been out sick. I don't know if she's ready yet, explaining all this.
Okay. So we, this board, of course, does not have control of the conservation issues or the conservation commission or the conservation agent. So I think what's going to be most productive is just to see if any board members have questions on what is going on. I will happily send that email, like I said, to the interim building commissioner asking whether the permit could be issued.
I met with that guy today.
Yeah?
I met with him today.
Okay.
Didn't go good.
Okay. And is the, was the response that it wouldn't be issued until the conscom issue was resolved?
No, he wants to set up a Zoom meeting between me, her, and him, and this is after he told me I shouldn't even have bought the building without a building permit.
Okay.
And that sort of infuriated me.
Okay. So I-
This has nothing to do with you people.
No.
This is just what happened.
You know, I, I will say that when you came before us, and we very rarely grant variances, and you were definitively a case for one.
And when I left that building that day, I was very excited, and I remember the guy that's not here said, "So when are you going to start?" And I said ASAP. He says, "Just remember to get a building permit."
Yep.
Now this has turned into a disaster, and looking back now, right now, I feel like I wish I had never come before you for a variance and just accepted that my stuff was going to get stolen, broken into, and smashed. I just left it there because this is a shit show, excuse my language.
I'm very sorry that you've experienced that, and, and I wish I could resolve it for you, but as, as you've said, we, we were really very happy to give you the relief that you asked for.
And I was glad you gave it to me, and what I'm saying has nothing to do with your board.
I know.
I did eight years in the military, twenty-six years as a prison guard, and this past week is more stress than all of that. I haven't slept in five days except for maybe an hour each night.
I hope that the, I hope that this resolves in a better way than it currently stands for you. I'm going to ask if any other board member has a question on this review? No? There are some things, sir, that we wanted to, we want to keep close, excuse me, close control over. It's been a long day for me, too. And there are some things that I think the boards come to the decision that we don't need to monitor as closely. So what I would like to do, unless a board member wants to, to review otherwise, is to set a review date that's pretty far out for you. And what that means is if you require, if you need to come back to us before that review, you are welcome to make the request to do so, but that we're not going to require you to come back until a date that's much further out. Okay? So that way, when the project is nearing completion or completed, and I hope that is a really, a very soon date for you, you can let us know when you're ready. This variance, the date of the meeting was May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. And so I'm, I'm open to suggestion on setting a, a date, but I am thinking that the end of two thousand and twenty-four, since we're looking for a far-out date, might be appropriate. Any board member have any? Go ahead.
Let's say you can get over these hurdles in the next couple of months. How much time from there do you think you'll need to complete it? Three months, four months?
Not even. If this is going to take a couple more months to get this permit, I'm canceling the whole thing, and I'm going to take the fifty thousand dollar loss and explain it to my family.
All right, six months.
So that would take us, do you want to go to June or May?
May.
May?
Yes.
Okay.
May twentieth.
Okay. Entertain a motion on that?
Make the motion, ZBA two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen for William Gleason, the property of Zero Airport Road for a continuance until May twentieth, no, May thirteenth.
I'll second.
Twenty twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Sir, we wish you very good luck in resolving these issues, and I hope you get that building constructed.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Reynolds. The next matter we're calling is ZBA two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-seven. This is eight oh eight Main Street, James Pappas. Review of a special permit to open and operate a cold storage warehouse as a modification of a pre-existing nonconforming use pursuant to the zoning code. Mr. Pappas, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening, James Pappas, ninety-seven Town Farm Road, Westminster, Mass.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So could you update us from the last time you were here before us?
Yeah, I think I was here in June this past summer, and since then, I had met with the Registry of Deeds, Kathleen Dagnall, and we toured the property, and she expressed an interest in having her space being moved from the redevelopment authority space on Boulder Drive. And that excited me because I thought the public storage, which you guys granted me, which is great, it's a good safety net for me, but if, if I could get the Registry of Deeds, that would be a much better use. I think that building overlooking City Hall, I think it would be great. So I reached out again to her, and the redevelopment authority is trying to renegotiate their lease and squelch them down from the, I think it's sixteen thousand square feet that they have now, and they need roughly half that. And my space is around twelve thousand square feet. So unfortunately, their lease isn't up until June of two thousand and twenty-five. They might be able to get out of it next year, but it's going to take some time. So I would like the board to be able to allow me to be able to have that safety net as a public storage spot, but that's not my first choice at this point. In addition to that, I went out and found out that the elevator, I got a bid on the elevator, and it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars, one hundred and sixteen grand. I thought it would be an easy fix because it went up and down okay, but it's, it's from nineteen seventy-nine, so they have to do a complete remodification of it. So that's the next stumbling block there, but I still want to follow through with the Registry of Deeds and see if they, request for proposal will have to go out, and then she, she toured the spot and expressed good interest in it. So that's where I'm at now, but I would like to, again, have a, a safety net to be able to have the public storage.
Okay. And let me just check, have you recorded the special permit at the registry?
I did, just recently, not right away, but I just did it recently.
Have you submitted a copy to the building department?
I don't know if my wife did or not. I have the copy here now.
Do you mind just showing, and then I'll give it right back to you? You can send a copy.
Actually, we have a copy of it, so you can have it.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. So this is recorded at book ten, six seventy, page forty-six, and I am going to insert that in the record. So this, was this first granted at the November two thousand and twenty-two meeting, or was it before that?
It says it right on here.
I want to, this was a-
It looks like November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah.
So a year ago.
A year ago. I'm going to go around and see if board members have any questions. I, I don't want the special permit to hang out there forever, so I do want to send, set a date that you're going to come back for.
Sure, I, I don't mind that.
Yeah.
I hope that the board understands that this is post-COVID, to have office space and to have it on Main Street in Fitchburg, then albeit on the second floor of a building that doesn't have an elevator that's operable, I'm up against it a little bit. So in my mind, a delay doesn't hurt me at all, especially if I'm able to land this type of a tenant, and I think it's good for the city of Fitchburg to have City Hall, the Registry of Deeds, the post office, banks next door, the historical commission, all in, in one nice circle. It seems to make more sense, but if that doesn't happen, I still have to produce a bottom line, and that means I, the public storage would be of a big help, and I don't think a nuisance, as the board already voted on.
And I think you, did you say June of two thousand and twenty-five that the current lease is extended to?
It's up, but the request for proposal has to go out earlier than that, so it gives me enough of time to fit up the space to their specs. So all in all, I, I should know in the next twelve months whether things happen, but much earlier than that, maybe not, maybe six or eight months. They can get out of it early, but I don't think that they'll push to do that.
Without checking the table of uses, I'm not sure that you would require a special permit for an office use on Main Street.
No, I don't believe so.
I don't think you do.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to go to see if any board members have questions. Mr. Byrne, welcome.
Mr. Pappas, you have forgot to tell us all the stuff that you've done to the building so far. As I understand it, there's a new roof on there for forty-some-odd thousand dollars.
I wish it was-
We got all brand-new air conditioners in there, which is starting to use that stuff for your storage. Is that correct?
We put the new roof on, the roof was a little over double of what you just quoted. And we put all LED lights in, that was sixty or seventy thousand dollars to go. We also put internet in through a private company. We also cleaned out the entire space, and we're about to decon-
So you're working towards getting the-
Oh, yeah.
The cold storage area.
All of it.
As long as you're working on the special permit to get it done, that's fine with us.
Got you.
With me anywhere.
I appreciate that, but yes, there's a lot that goes on before this happens, but yes, all of that.
Okay. Any other board member? I am going to, so again, we are trying out a policy where we're going to set a far-off date for review, and if you need to come back to us before that, you're welcome to call and ask to be scheduled on the next meeting that we can schedule you on. I'm going to think that without, without change in the status, we'd be looking at about a year, unless anyone has an objection to that. Okay. Mercedes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, we just need to have the applicant come in before the two years is up. So do we do it in October, and then we, we're allowed to grant the one-year extension?
The variance is the, where we have a limit on the extension, I think, but we could definitely have an extension on special permit in October, just to be sure, just to be sure that you don't have an expired special permit, or if you're not going to put it to use, that we terminate it.
Sure.
So that would be the October meeting of next year?
And that would allow the applicant to request a one-year extension?
I think that's an excellent idea, protect the rights of the applicant.
Let's do that.
Could you tell us the date in October?
October eighth.
October the eighth.
Okay.
That's Tuesday. Love to entertain a motion on a continuance.
Sure, why not? All right. So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So we are continued to October eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. All of the conditions continue until that point in time. If you do need to come see us before then, just please let Ms. Mata know so that we can schedule you.
Excellent. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Your efforts.
Calling the next review, which is ZBA two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-one. This is fifty-six Cully Street. This is Yael Dario Recio. Welcome. So we're reviewing the special permit to reinstate and change, oh, I'm sorry, to open a motor vehicle body and paint shop in the neighborhood business district. Please each say your name and city of residence for the minutes.
Yael Dario Recio.
Thank you. And what city do you live in?
Fitchburg.
Thank you.
Ricardo Arujo, Leo, Mr. Mass.
Thank you. All right. So you were last before us on, in June, and at that point, we had three things to be done: paving, fence painting, and the rear yard to be cleaned of wood and debris.
I can provide pictures?
That would be great. Thank you. So we're going to take a minute so I can circulate the pictures. Can you pass that to me? In, while we're looking at these, we have a comment. Which department is this from?
Planning.
Thank you. A minor site plan approval was submitted to the planning office on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So you needed the site plan approval that hadn't been done yet?
Yeah, we had a date for the thirtieth, November thirtieth, with the planning board.
So at the next planning board meeting?
Twenty-nine or thirty, I'm not sure.
Okay.
We were, when they assume the plans and everything with them. So we fill out the application, everything, they give it to us the day, I don't remember, the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth of November.
But the Tuesday of November.
Twenty-eighth.
Am I right?
Can you pass the exterior backyard pictured so that we could have those?
Yep.
Okay. And I need to keep the pictures for the minutes, so-
Yeah, that's fine.
Just that, you didn't see the first one. Okay. So I am, so I see the rear of the building being cleaned out, and I had gone by the building, and I, the rear yard, the upper hill behind the building, there still seemed to be some debris. I did see the painting. The painting was, the painting was complete, the paving was complete, the dumpsters in the, in the fenced-in part of the building, but there was still some trash on the hill behind.
That trash for the hill behind is coming for the apartments behind. You know, for instance, couches, these, they all dump it up for the buildings in the back.
Have you had the inspections from the building and fire department for the spray booth?
The fire department, no, for the cabina?
No, yet.
No, yet.
Okay. And I didn't see any unregistered vehicles on there. There were no unregistered cars on there.
He don't operate it yet. He's waiting for you guys to start operate, make his operation. He have none cars there.
Okay. Open this up to any board member with a comment or a question. Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
How much property does the applicant own from the rear of the building?
It's two, is, they go to two different houses. Back in the day, one was yellow and the other one blue. I don't know now.
Yeah. No, from the, from the rear wall of the building, how far back is owned by the applicant?
I don't remember how many footage, but it's like a big shell, they extend another little hill, and it's a fence there.
Sure.
So they not supposed to throw stuff from the fence there.
Right. So you had a, you had a plot plan done?
Yes.
When the little piece was purchased?
Yes.
So how far back is the rear lot line?
Not too far. It's just for that little piece we purchased, it's just about there only.
Right. So how far from the rear wall of the building back?
I don't have the plans we need right now.
Do we still have a copy of that plot plan?
To say, to be esp, I don't have the plans we need to be specific. I have one here, I leave it with you guys, and another one, city here, and another one in planning board.
Mercedes, my habit.
Yeah.
The, the point I'm, that we're driving at is that we wanted the property to be cleaned up, right? So here's the rear of the building, okay? It looks like it cuts in here about fifteen feet.
Okay.
So there's probably approximately fifty feet from the rear building-
Okay.
-to his property line.
Mm-hmm.
And we would like that all cleaned out.
For, we don't make that mess. That mess is there forever. Why, why we have to clean out that?
Because it's his property.
Cause it's his property.
So what part, what do you need, what are you talking about? What do you exactly wanna be cleaned out out of there?
All the debris. Like we talked about way in the beginning, you know?
The trash was there in the beginning. We take it out. That, that was behind here. We take everything out.
Yep.
What you may be talking about, I don't know, I don't went there for a while, is up the hill, right?
I think our, I think the board's expectation, not just mine, you know, from the beginning.
No, no, we're talking, it's about-
Yeah, yeah. Was just that we wanted the property cleaned up. So even though you've got people throwing stuff on the property, right? Cause you used to own the property and you know of people, you might have to visit the people next door and say, "This is our property. You can't put this here," but I think the expectation is, we wanted the property cleaned up.
Okay, so.
So, that's all.
I gotta go check it out what it is. I gonna clean it up again, but, and I gonna has to talk to those people too.
Yeah. You know, they may, they may not know, it may have just been over time and nobody's-
They think it's empty land. That's what the people probably think.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but that's all.
I, I don't even know what it is there, Michael, but I'm gonna go check it out.
But if you, if the property was surveyed, there should be a marker that shows where you're-
It's a fence. Even with the fence there, they always throw away things over.
Yeah, but that, that's all. That's, I think all we're-
Okay, whatever is there, I promise I gonna check it out.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mercedes, press that down there.
I know it's, um, frustrating to have other people dump on your property.
You're right.
I know it's frus- I know it's frustrating to have other people dump on your property, but as property owner, you have to-
Don't worry about it. You're right. We're gonna clean it up, whatever it takes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question also.
Absolutely, Mr. Gallagher.
And I appreciate your efforts thus far.
Thank you.
But I have a question. Uh, in terms of the dumpster, it looks like there's a city dumpster out front. What was the plan for a dumpster on the property? And is it-
Already in the is, in the plan, it shows where the dumpster is gonna be.
And when is it gonna be installed, is my question?
Straight in against the building.
No, not, not where, when?
Oh, when?
Yeah.
Well, we went to start operating, to rental, because why we gonna be paying for a dumpster if we don't?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just-
Soon as we start, boom.
Okay, so that's, so that's the answer.
I got info, the other information, because I'm work now in, in my show in Lunenburg, on Facebook, I'm operating on my, my property.
Right.
Renting Lunenburg. He, soon as he move, he gonna move the-
So the answer is, is when you start?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, the other thing I wanna ask you is, um, the pavement. It seems to be a rough coat. Is that the, the permanent coat that-
Yes.
-you had intended?
Yes, it's permanent.
I don't know how the other board members feel, but I feel it looks a little rough and unfinished, but other than that, I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. No further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Gallagher. Any other board member have a question? Okay.
Martha Stein, thank you.
I, um, with that cleaned up, um, I, uh, and then you have the occup- the inspections to be completed once that's done. Um, and I look forward to your opening and operating a good shop.
Thank you.
Um, I think that, given that you have to do the site plan review, um, what we normally do is say whatever the planning board says is a con- is a condition, is also something that we would enforce. So it doesn't add anything different from us. It just says, "We also enforce the planning board's, um, rules when you go to the planning board."
I know. I understand.
So I would suggest that it would be good to modify the conditions to add that, um, particular condition. Um, does anyone have a suggestion on a review date?
Just one more question?
Of course.
Back to Brian. Is it just the binder coat that got put down, or was there a finished coat?
It's finished coat. That's what the company do for us.
Okay.
Yeah, we painted everything and, and it's coming aligned with the street and everything. So if I, we put another coat, it's gonna be off the street. So we, that's what they give it to us, the company.
Okay, we're just concerned, you know, it kinda got paved to some extent, but now you start plowing it and if it wasn't done properly, then we-
Well, if he, when we plowing, that's, something breaks or something, we gonna has to go back to the company who did it, because we don't know nothing about paving. So that's why we contract, uh, contractor pay company and they did it for us, and they give you warranties about conditions, right? So we did everything they want, did one car sitting there for like a month or two, but boom, we did everything they asked. So now if something happen, we gonna has to go against them. So was no me and him who did the paving, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other suggestions on conditions modification? If there was a concern about the quality of the pavement that was done, we could have a condition, um, requiring maintenance of the paving?
Sure.
In good order?
Thank you.
So, um, we'd be looking at two conditions being added. Um, the first would be to incorporate any conditions of a site plan approval from the planning board. The second was that the pavement shall be maintained in good condition-
Mm-hmm.
-and repaired or replaced as needed. And then the existing, uh, issue is of course the cleanout of the rear yard.
I wanna go personally tomorrow morning, walk up there, everything, see what I have. And if I have to rent a dumpster to clean it up, we gonna do it right away. We not wanna wait till the snow come and later it's excuse.
Okay. Um, and I'm looking for a suggestion on a review date.
Yeah, when you plan on opening?
Soon as you guys give it okay. If you guys give okay tomorrow, tomorrow he needs to open as soon possible.
Okay, so pretty quick, right?
Yeah.
Six months, I guess, review?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that way you'll be under operation. Um, this is not, uh, this is not a special permit where we're holding the certificate of occupancy, so.
Thank you.
Set to go.
Yep. So that would take us to the May meeting.
May thirteenth?
Okay. Could I have a motion on the review?
Be, I'll make that motion. Uh, before I, I do, we, we went through a lot of effort. Thank you for everything you did.
Yep.
To make the building look good. What I think we had all talked about, you know, we came up with a good parking plan. We're able to work everything out. We don't want it to be what it was before, with cars all lined up on the street. You know, the whole idea of the parking was to get the vehicles onto the business, right? So just kinda be conscious of that, but we wish you the best.
Thank you, sir.
So, we really do. And thank you for assisting, Brian.
Yeah, my pleasure. Okay, I wanna do something. I gonna clean the thing and I gonna take a picture for records, because-
Great.
Maybe we have to, another issue with the neighbors and they dump it again, and I don't wanna, I say I gonna clean it, I gonna clean it, and I gonna take a pictures, okay?
Sure.
Also gonna take it out, couple, to money shed, but I don't know if the people go buy this, do this and shed, you know? If you know we gonna has to go to police department or something, I don't know.
My suggestion is to go to board, to the Board of Health.
Board of Health, okay.
If it continues. You clean it up, it continues. Report it to the Board of Health.
Thank you so much.
And if you have a picture of it cleaned up-
That's good.
-and then more things are dumped on it, it's good evidence for the Board of Health.
Thank you so much.
You know, maybe you get in there and do some landscaping. I don't mean plant grass, but, you know, once it's cleaned out, people will recognize that and say, "Oh, okay."
Right.
It's not our property, right? Cause most likely they're tenants, not property owners.
Fence, you supposed to think you can throw over the fence.
Sure, sure.
Common sense. If you know fence, okay, anybody can think whatever, but it's a, a four-foot fence, you know? But what, it's a good idea. The land can't be, it's probably gonna be by the summertime, the springtime, but for now, we gonna clean it up.
Right.
Alright, I'd like to move us along.
I'll make the motion on ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, um, for the property at fifty-six Cully Street, to approve the review, add the two conditions that were recommended by the board, and with the review on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Good luck with everything.
Thank you. Question, when he can start work, basically?
Well, I, I think you're clear of us. I think you don't need approval from us to start your business.
Okay.
Um, the planning board, of course, needs to do its site plan.
Okay.
And so you'll have to see what's coming from them. Um, and what's, what's happening is at the next review, at any review, that you're not in compliance with the conditions. The board has the right to revoke the special permit or recommend that the building department issue a fine. Since we're not holding the certificate of occupancy, you can, as soon as the building department gives that to you, you're free to operate. Just remember that, uh, we retain that right. It's just the reason, i- i- it's the means by which we're making sure that-
We had the conditions right. It's not like a, "Oh, I forgot."
Yeah. And it, and if, and if you are, great. And if you're not, then we'll have to see what happens at that point in time.
Perfect.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
You very successful.
Thank you.
Um, I'm calling the next matter for review, ZBA twenty twenty-three dash ten. This is twenty-one Union Street, Louis Colton. This is the review of the special permit to, uh, reinstate an abandoned building and change the use from a church to a single-family dwelling. Is anybody here on this matter? I'm just gonna take a moment. Um, I don't believe anyone has been present virtually, but I'm gonna make sure. Okay.
Sorry, any questions? Uh, I just have a question. Uh, I understand this is a public hearing. Uh, I am the public here. I don't actually own any property or I'm not looking for any sort of like zoning situation here. Uh, I was just curious, does the voice of the public matter in what is going on here? Yeah, right?
So this is, this is a public meeting. This is a public meeting. Um, we have during this public meeting, public hearings, which are hearings on the allowance or non-allowance of the original petition, during which public comment is taken. Okay. Um, we do, are unlike the city council, and we do not open with, um, a public comment session. Um, any comments are welcome during those public meetings. At times, we do look to see if anybody else has a comment. Um, and we welcome people to come and make a comment. Many times, we will sit here and there will be very few people here. And, um, you know, I'm always glad to see more participants from the community, so. Um, there is, uh, someone named, uh, someone who is an attendee remotely. Sir, if you had any comment you wish to make, please raise your hand, and if not, I will move on. Okay. So we don't have someone here on this. Um, we do have a couple of other matters before we're done with our review session. So I'm gonna suggest we call this review one more time. Mr. McLaughlin, did you have a comment on that?
If, if this gentleman is here for a particular case, I would just like to be conscious of it, so we give him an opportunity to speak, that's all.
Uh, if you let me, if, if you're here in a particular case, um, I'll just, I'm gonna make a note to come back to you. Okay. Any particular address?
Uh, yes, eight O eight Main Street.
Um, that one has already been called.
Right, but there's nobody to say whether I was able to comment or, you know, I, I wasn't sure exactly how this whole thing ran.
So, understand. Um, I'll, I will just update you on what happened, which is that, uh, that was already allowed. We received an update on status, and the next review hearing that is scheduled is scheduled for October eighth of twenty twenty-four. Okay? Um, with the applicant being able to request. So I, I-
Could you step up to the mic?
Please step up. I don't like us to be out of order, and we usually-
Yeah, no, I apologize for not understanding this.
But if you can keep it brief, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I believe the city of Pittsburgh has, uh, too many self-storage units or buildings here. Uh, before Mayor Dentali had, is out of office, he actually approved, uh, self-storage over, I believe, over on, uh, Fitz- John Fitch Highway.
Mm-hmm.
Right next to the Cinema World in that whole plaza. Uh, on top of that, I believe they've also approved, or you guys have also approved, a different, uh, storage, self-storage unit being built, uh, not too far around the way from there. Uh, I believe it's, I can't recall the street name. I apologize, but, uh, Bouchard.
I'm gonna interrupt you, sir, but-
No, it's okay.
These storage units that we're talking about-
Yes.
-in eight O eight Main Street are not storage units that you see like behind, uh, big lots or-
Right.
They're, they're not the same. These are-
Okay.
These are, uh, storage units for lawyers, insurance agencies to file paperwork that have to be climate-controlled.
Okay, that's a better understanding. Thank you, because that's not explained in the, uh, you know, in the notice of like what all the zones are.
Correct. I'm sorry that it wasn't, but that's-
No, that's perfectly fine.
We approved it for, uh, storage of hard drives, storage of paper files for legal insurance or any things that have to be kept for seven years.
Right.
And they are not available in, um, they don't, the people don't have enough storage space in their areas.
Okay.
This is, uh, a special type of storage that is temperature-controlled.
Not personal belongings or of those things?
No, it's not personal belongings.
Okay. Great, that's, thank you, because that was not explained prior.
Yeah, and just to, uh, let you know, I know that the John Fitch Storage Facility in the Cinema World Plaza did not, that was not before us. That was before the planning board.
Oh, really? Okay.
Um, and I'm not sure about the other one. I know that we had, uh, one that was up towards the-
Lunenburg Street.
-that end of Main Street, um, that did not move forward.
Okay.
But otherwise, I'm not sure which address that you were talking about.
Well, thank you. I do apologize, uh, I apologize for wasting any sort of time here, but, uh-
You're the public. That's why we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending the meeting. I am supposed to take your name and city of residence for the minutes, if you don't mind.
Sure. Uh, Diego Delgado, Pittsburgh.
Welcome, Diego. Thanks for speaking.
Not a problem. Uh, just keep in mind, you know, too many self-storage units just ends up being too much. I mean, we're, the city already has thirteen of them.
You're right.
That is a lot.
I don't think a lot of us were a fan of the John Fitch project. Can I say that out loud?
No, you didn't, because we don't comment on other boards. Next matter is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash ten, twenty-one Union Street. I think I already called this. Um, I did not see anybody here to speak on this matter. Is anybody here to speak on this matter? We're gonna go on to the next review and then recall any missed matters at the end. Um, the next is ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one. This is ten thirty-three Main Street, Jose Francisco Bueno. This is a review of the special permit that was granted, um, to continue, uh, the use on the property as an auto repair shop. Welcome to the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Um, could you please, uh, anyone who will speak, please give your name and city of residence?
It's Jose Francisco in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Hi, Catherine Mejia Clinton.
Very good. Thank you for coming. Alright, so I, I believe the last time you were before us was the granting of the special permit, right?
Yes.
Okay. And we gotta skip this one and go to that one. So that was in July, okay? Um, and the special permit was granted with some conditions. And so if you could just, uh, start out by giving us an update on where you are.
So we got a lot done, um, in the building. We weren't able to do most of the stuff that we wanted outside due to all the construction on the road. Um, we had a tough time trying to get to the building itself. One, the, the parking lot, we couldn't fill in the cracks and paint it. Same with the lines, cause we, we gotta do the parking lot first. The fence, um, I have, I had a contract to get both fences put up. But on one of the sides that the fence was gonna go up, it had to get dug up. So until they weren't done with, with all the construction and all that- So, until they weren't done with, with all the construction and all that, I couldn't put up the fence. Which I have pictures to show you guys about that. We painted the, the building a neutral color like you asked. We removed, there was no debris there, pretty much. But we kept it clean. The signs on the way to get fixed. We got our new sign up. The bottom is getting fixed as we speak. And they started on it, it's not quite done yet, but they did start on it. We did a lot of updates on the lights and stuff like that in, in the inside. A lot of fixing in the inside. But until the road's not 100% complete, I couldn't get any, like, I had a new lift installed. That was, the first time they came, they couldn't do it. The second time, they were able to get through. The lights, they weren't even able to deliver them to the shop. It had to been delivered to where I'm working now because a truck couldn't get by. So, it's been, it's been a little hassle trying to get there, you know? But we're trying to fight through it. But everything else is, it's in good shape, so.
Okay. So, going through the conditions one by one.
Yeah.
We have professional signage only.
Yeah.
And that, I didn't see any unprofessional signage. You're still waiting on the final sign to be installed, or is that done?
So, we got the, the final sign up on the, on the pole. So, that's the one that's gonna stay there. The lights are new. But I, I like to paint the pole to match the building and then the bottom, yellow. The yellow's gonna get painted with the parking lot once it gets the top coat done. And then the, the actual poles gotta get cleaned and then repainted too.
Okay. The next condition is no vehicles for sale, no unregistered vehicles on premises, and no storage vehicles other than active customers and employees. And I don't know that anybody has seen any vehicle storage. I think there was one vehicle on the property while it was there and it was registered.
Like the neighbor that wanted to park there for the time being with the construction. I told him he could, he could do that.
Some of these are conditions that are going to occur once you're under operation. So, auto repairs to be performed within the building only.
Yeah.
No outside storage or display of tires or vehicle parts. Property kept clear of trash and debris. I think there was a tire pile that was out front and that's removed.
Yeah, once the, the last owner had like a, it's like a weird sign with the tires, but all that's been gone.
Great. Dumpsters on the rear right of the property. I did see the dumpster there. In-and-out directional markers shall be painted on the pavement to indicate a one-way direction. That's gonna be the painting that's done with the final coat?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. You're gonna replace the vinyl fence? And you have some pictures about that?
Yeah. I have the pictures of where, like, the construction was happening and I couldn't put up the fence.
If you wouldn't mind coming up and we'll circulate them. Just knowing I have to unfortunately keep them.
So, you can just see the color difference now?
Yep. Yep. Right in front.
Yeah. So, the sign got a little bit worse before I got back.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. I don't know if they ran it over or what the case was.
Yep.
That's when they started fixing it.
Right. So, the city is fixing that for you?
No.
Oh, you're, you're fixing it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for fixing it.
That's, this is where the fence is supposed to go.
Mm-hmm.
Right now. If you can see the hole that they have to take out, that's past that. So, until they were done, they just finished, it was very-
And you have a contract for the installation of the fence?
Yeah. Yes, I can keep those, so that's just not-
Thank you. Can you, anything that we take to look at, we have to keep? So, I don't wanna take your contract. Would you mind forwarding a copy of the contract? You can, you're welcome to delete the cost.
So, it's actually an email, so you guys can have the copy.
If you don't mind, that would be great, thank you. Thank you. So much paperwork.
That's the last one, of course.
We're gonna have to end up redoing that, that quote with the contract. Because it's, as you can see, it's only good for a certain amount of days. But we're going into the cold months now anyways, and I'm pretty sure that they don't do it in the cold months, so.
They're gonna have to drill, cut a hole in the asphalt to do that?
The asphalt, yeah.
Okay. Remaining conditions, remove the pole with rims and chains on it. Then there was the installation of the fence on the right-hand side of the property to prevent parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Building to be painted in, repair, replace the existing sign pole and base. We talked about that. Building to be painted in a neutral color, that was finished. We had a completion by this meeting, not to be a public or private nuisance, which means don't bother anybody else too much.
Yeah.
Your hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, Saturday, 8 to 1. And then, are you still the owner of the property, or is your LLC?
It's an LLC.
Okay. Midnight Auto Repair, Inc.
Yes.
Not Midnight Auto Repair LLC?
No, it's a, yeah. Sorry about that. No, it's not LLC, it's a corporation.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanna make sure we get the name right, so the special permit-
Sorry about that.
And did you record the special permit at the registry of deeds?
Yes.
Okay. Did you provide a copy of that to the building department?
Thought they gave you the copy or no?
Okay.
I mean, I do have the original.
So, if you can, if you've recorded it, can you email a copy to Ms. Mata at the building department? Because that's what, that's what allows the building department to release the, any certificate of occupancy or building permit.
Of course, yeah.
The permit's not valid until it's recorded at the registry of deeds.
Gotcha. We can bring it right over tomorrow, if that's, if that's fine.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Any other board member have a question or a comment?
I do, madam.
Mr. Gallagher, please.
When do you hope to become fully operational in that location?
As soon as possible. Unfortunately, I gotta wait for the road to, to be done.
Right.
Which is paved, they're just finishing the rotary. So, hopefully soon, we can get it open and going.
Yeah. Well, I think you've done a great job thus far. The painting and the sign looks great.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Byrne, Mr. Reynolds, any questions or comments? Okay. Is there anything before we move to vote on the review?
I just have a quick question. I have an old land of, plant of land. Do you guys have a new one at all? Because this is, it's really old, from 97.
97?
Yeah.
We can certainly see if there's anything else in the file. I think go to the building department and see.
And see if they have one.
But normally, a survey is done and then it's recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And so, you would look there to see if one is recorded.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But, you know, everything at the building department in your, in the file for this property is public records, so you're welcome to ask for it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Does any board member, other than the completion date, have a suggestion on the addition or modification of any condition we have here?
I do not, dear gentleman.
No?
Okay. Looking for a suggestion on the next review date for this applicant.
May 14th for consistency?
Mm-hmm. I think that would be a great meeting. You're gonna have a great meeting that day. So, again, on this, on this special permit, we are not holding the certificate of occupancy, which means you're not required to get our approval before the building department issues it.
Okay.
Okay? If you do need to come back to us prior to that May review date, contact Ms. Mata, and we'll schedule you and see if we can accommodate you to see us sooner. Otherwise, we'll have the review in May and see how you're doing. Hopefully, everything will be well-done by then and you'll have the business on the way.
Hopefully.
So, that was a May 13th date, I believe, right?
14.
May 14th. Okay. It's a Tuesday. Show up on here on a Monday, you're gonna have a very different set of people. Okay. Can I, I'd like to take, entertain a motion on the review?
So, move.
To continue to May 14th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Good luck.
Thank you.
I hope there is no more construction in front of your building.
Hopefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next review, so I'm going and recalling at this point, is ZBA 2023-02. That is 479 Water Street. This is a review of the special permit to reinstate an abandoned building and convert to a two-family. Right. So, you were the first on the list, and now I'm coming back to you, so. But please, welcome to the meeting. Have a seat, state your name and city of residence.
My name is Micklin. I live in Bettetown.
Very good. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So, just gonna pull the last review decision. Some comments to go through. Do you? You're so organized. Thank you. Okay. So, we last saw you at a meeting on, in April. And I, we've certainly driven by and see that that's, some work's been being done on the property. I am going to go through the conditions with you and see where we are. But I also wanted, before we began, to read that, any comments from city departments. So, this one, oh, that is a different one. That one? Okay. Okay. So, from the building department, it says that they have done the rough inspections for plumbing, electrical, and building. Okay? And nothing on that one? And no comment there? Okay. So, the Board of Health, the comment is that it's good to get this building reoccupied, have had illegal dumping reports from this property often. Has that happened while you've been working on the property?
No.
No? Okay.
So, I cleaned the property and I think there was one time we were at a bag, and when people drive by, they're through, like, they just dump trash, like. So, I just don't understand why people do that in fish bag.
Well, people don't wanna take their trash all the way to the dump, so.
But apart from that-
There's a convenient vacant house for it to be in front of. Okay. Do you wanna give a brief summary of what stage you're at right now?
Oh, yes. So, I did a new roof, new windows, framing is all completed. I put new sidings on the outside and then I put a mini-split for the insulation, I mean, for the AC. It's a mini-split on both unit. And for the, for the basement that he mentioned about water, so basement engineer checked that it's no water, which is because it was being abandoned. So, the basement is pretty clean, everything in there, but it's just low because of the nature of the foundation. But the only thing left right now is for me to put insulation. And I have to do with a spray foam. So, probably this week or next week. I'm just looking for the right, for the right estimate, because they're charging like $18,000 just for the spray foam for the house.
This is the new energy code that was discussed-
Yeah.
-when you were getting the permit?
Yeah. So, it's a new code by Massachusetts, so.
Yep.
So, I'm just looking for what price works best for me. I'm seeing like 15, 16, 18, so I'm just weighing my options. But probably this week or next week, they'll put their insulation and then from there, I'll start closing the walls. So, the other thing I also wanna say is there are some obstacles that I found that it wasn't part, that I'm shocked that I have to do it. The, the water board, they want me to, to do two, two lines of water for each unit. And just doing that, I'm just looking for, just doing that, it's gonna cost me $25,000. And my question I have is why am I responsible to dig and close the whole water? And in addition of that, they want me to dig the O-lines and close it. And that, just to dig that O-line, it's gonna cost me like extra $5,000. So, but I would pay the guy to start doing the water. Martinez, so he's doing that, I think he started today. He started doing the, the job today. But I'm just concerned why that's my responsibility to do.
It's not our jurisdiction, unfortunately.
Yeah.
You know, the water department can answer those questions, building department, but-
So, we had a condition that you take care of any water issue in the basement as of water infiltration, you know, water soaking the basement. We did not put a condition about the water lines being replaced or going in. I'll just say that I, A, we're not the people who know the reason for it, can we, or can resolve the problem, that is the water department or the building department. And I, you know, would also say, I just know when you're, when you have that kind of property where it's been vacant, I think you've been experiencing that it needs to be upgraded to code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, must code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the cities and towns, while I, I think a lot of us support environmentalism and conservation, the stretch code, the, and the modified stretch code for energy conservation-
Yeah.
-is a thing that is new to all of us and it's coming from the state level, so.
Yeah. So, I did all of that. The windows were all efficient, I put all new windows. So, I think the house looked pretty, I mean, it's a new house right now. If you walk into the building right now, it's different from what you ever saw last time. It's a whole different game.
I think we questioned whether it would be easier to simply tear it down and reconstruct at the beginning of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if I wasn't selling, I could have kept the house myself. Because it's so much, it's so much nicer if you walk in there right now.
So I'm going to just go through the conditions. Some of these are things that will apply once it's done, some of these are things that apply right now. First is that it's to be operated as a two-family with no more than two bedrooms for each unit, and that's how it's being constructed right now, right?
Yeah.
Upgraded to building code as required, so you know, if the code requires you, then you upgrade. All work to be completed in a good and workman-like fashion and properly permitted, inspected, and certified to be complete. And then we had three-phase construction.
Yeah.
So the first phase was the safety inspection and we had concerns about the structural support, the floors being level, you know, we were in there and the floors were going like that. So what had happened with the safety inspection?
It did pass framing inspection, so I even ended up spending more than, more than the X in one of them. The plan you guys had, because the engineer came back, we had to put almost fourteen loaded columns at the basement. And we jacked everything up and we did like new floors for everything. And for the roof thereafter, we had to put two-by-six double support on both sides. And that ended up costing me so much more money than I even expected for that. And then for the floor, like the up and down, the other same floor, we had to put L-veers on both ends, more than, I could say like, one, two, three, four, five, almost like eight L-veers. And that was a lot for me too, and I had to do that. Like I said, the building now, if you guys ever want to walk in there, before I close the walls, you guys could put an appointment so you could take a look yourself and you see, it's a different whole everything. Yeah, everyone inspection came, he couldn't believe what he saw, what they like, yeah.
It's, if it's completely different, I think that's a good thing.
Yes, it's a whole different stuff.
So phase two was replacement of the roof, doors, windows, siding, and exterior trim. We needed the engineering plan, the plan with the parking, to show where the storage for the snow was, so that needed to be added to that plan and then submitted to the building department.
For the snow?
So just marking the snow location where, when it snows and you remove the snow, where is it going?
We have three parking spot at the front. And it's just like the same board the other neighbors also have. And we have space at the back, because I was here last time, I said cars could have been good vibe, and my dumpster, big stuff dumpster went all the way in the back, and that's where the dumpster was, and there was no issue for him to go back on floor. For the snow, if they have to shuffle the snow, they're gonna just put on the side of the building. Because I can't, I can't spend almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and what I'm getting right is concerned about the snow. I've spent so much money on that, and my loan even expired on the house, which I feel like I'm, I have to pay extra twenty thousand dollars just renew that loan. So I can't spend all this money and they focus on snow when they can, whoever, when I said the property, whoever lives there, it's not a big issue to mold the snow, it's a small front at the back, when you put three cars and then there'll be no space for any snow.
I think the concern is that the three spaces take up all of the front of your property, right? It's the whole front. You know, so we're, the question is really, show us where the snow is gonna go when somebody's there removing it. And the request is just to mark on the plan where it's going to go. I'm gonna suggest that you might have space in the back.
Yes, some more space in the back, because at the back, we piled the stone at the back, so we push everything on the corner, so we clean everything and there's some more space in the back, yeah.
Okay, I don't want to keep us here because it's seven twenty-one, so we're running behind at this point. So you're working on the interior construction right now?
Correct.
We did note there wasn't any touching of the wall, the granite wall in the back?
No, because if I have to touch that wall, we just kind of add more stones, like support, that's what we did, because when the engineer came, he take a look, he said if we have to dig and to do new walls or whatever, it's gonna shake the foundation of the other building. And that building is not my building. And the tree right there is not in my property, belongs to the other guy. And if I have to, that tree gonna fall, and if that tree falls, it's gonna shake his foundation because the roots are under the tree. And that guy could sue me and it could cost me somewhat damage, so he advised me we should never think about that.
Did the engineer give a written report?
No, based on what we all saw, and he's an engineer and he's an expert that drew the plan and did everything. He looked, he went at the back, he saw it, he said it, even when the contractor to, he's also engineer, the person that put the permit, he went to the back and he all said the same thing, because if you ever go to the property, the tree doesn't belong to me, it's on the side. And the tree is just close to the guy's foundation. And if we have to dig, because those stones are big stones, you can't leave it with your hand, you need, like, I don't know how that thing is called, a big to come over and, if they have to keep doing that, it's gonna shake the foundation of...
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm looking, I'm just looking for some documentation of that from the engineer, so that we have a professional opinion on that.
Oh no, he, you know, because if we have to do all of that, I gotta, he had to go sit down and write, and engineers are not cheap either, I gotta pay them, that's what he mentioned.
And then at the end, there's going to be a little bit of landscaping between the house and the two parking spaces, there's a small strip of dirt.
I already did it.
Yeah.
I already did it.
I didn't see any there.
It's a little curve, talking about like the curve part of the, yeah, we just put, like the cornerstone, the stone that goes round.
So I'm just...
About twelve cobblestones on the left side.
Yeah, so that's what the guy did, he just clean, he just scrape it and make it look nice, yeah.
So I am gonna see if I can share my screen here for a moment. There we go. So these are some pictures of the property.
Yeah.
We were curious as to what this is. What is this?
So, that have to be replaced. And my electrician gonna put new mirror on the wall, so what you see right there, it has no use, it's not function, because it hasn't discovered from the pole. So the main supply from the pole by, had a company call.
Unitel.
Unitel, yeah, they already came and took it off. So there's nothing there, right there, anybody can do whatever. Yeah, so when you go up on the top right there, so if you look at, there's no extension, like, you know, like electric...
There's no connection between it and the house?
Yeah, it has the big, like the fat, like, I cannot describe that, like, the ten by, they call it like ten by six or ten by eight, the big one. If you look at, there's nothing that goes to the pole, so there's no electricity right there. I just kept that, the reason I put that right there is because if you go back down, if you keep going all the way to down like the last one. So that part right there doesn't come no more, it's hard, it's hard to get. And the electrician told the inspector, we put an order for that almost six months, we haven't gotten it. And if he doesn't have that, and that means the house could have no light.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
So, but that's temporarily there and you're awaiting a piece from Unitel?
Correct, and that thing has no use, there's no cable, if you look at the stuff on the ground, it's been cut, so there's nothing there, there's no...
So there's no electricity there, it's not a danger issue?
It's not a danger issue.
Okay. A couple other things. So again, we had the, requested that the siding be replaced, but it's been painted. So, and one of the issues when it gets painted instead of replaced, is that the vinyl kind of moves. And then right here, you can see, you have these cracks that show, so it detracts from what is otherwise a, you know, nice renovation to the building.
So, those sidings were not painted, they were painted and replaced, those siding were replaced and painted. I like that color and I could not find green because it's a special order. So I replaced everything with a white side and then I sprayed everything, I have a video from my whole side, I could show you if you want to. So those sidings were all removed and I put white sidings, then I sprayed the whole thing with that color because I like the color. And it even cost me more because I want my house, I want to sell fast, I'm a businessman, I want to attract customers. So what happened right there, those sides were all white, I went to Home Depot, I did new white siding, quite more twenty-five thousand dollars to replace those sidings, and then I sprayed the sidings with different color.
Are you able to, can you go back and do some touch up, like, I think if you took a paintbrush to all of the seams?
Yeah, definitely, before I sell, I'm gonna do that, I actually have the paint, this is Benjamore paint, that graph from Benjamore. Those are the high-quality paint, it could last there for more than fifteen years without going anywhere. Those are all white, they were brand-new white sidings I bought from Home Depot, transpired everything myself, the guys, they're not, I could show the video if you want me to, I took the whole video for the house, when the guy, they were knocking off everything, I have on my phone.
Would like to see those.
Okay.
He's saying that he put new on and then painted it, and so there's a video of the installation.
Thank you, I couldn't hear that. Thank you.
No problem. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, again, I want to move on, I'm just gonna note that this was the new unit that you had stalled in the back, that's the air handler. And was there a reason that you didn't, you know, do the concrete block support installation?
So that's based on my EVA guy, I mean, he's a professional, he's licensed. And the reason, from what he said, the reason he did not put the concrete is because if it rains, if it rains, rain come, the concrete gonna stop water, it's gonna hold water, and with horse water, it's gonna go back in the basement. So the water have to just keep running through. And that's why he put a part, so if it rains, if water come, water should just, water should just slide through and go to the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna ask, because I do want to move along, does anybody have any other questions for the permit holder on that side? Do you have any other questions you want to ask?
I just have some comments. You know, I'm struggling with the work that we've seen so far. When we pulled up to the house, the first thing I saw were a set of stairs that were reset, that were two inches off level, you know? We look at the mini-split that was just bolted to the blacktop. I know you just showed me some pictures of some of the siding being repaired, but I went by there several times and it was just being feathered in, the broken stuff was being replaced with the new. You know, the roof, has it been replaced?
That's a, that's a new roof, so.
Because we're struggling, was there a permit specific for the roof, or do you have some, some type of concrete evidence that the roof was inspected by the building department?
Before they have to do, before they have to put their, run all their, the double stuff in, on the raft, I mean, the roof is already been replaced, it's a new roof, before they even have to do that.
Okay. So you haven't done it yet?
I have done it, and I'm trying to grab the visual of the roof, I have, you can see the roof right there.
I guess I just want to be conscious that, you know, what our expectations are, we have a long list of conditions, and that maybe you should take a real good look at the conditions that the board has put down as an agreement for this project. That's all.
Yeah, I truly understand what you're saying, but...
And we know that you've come across some unforeseen costs, you're a developer, I know you're in it to, you know, make a profit and move on. We're here to make sure that we have a good project that's a long-term success for the city, okay? Okay, thank you. Some good clarification. But would, you know, just want to set what our expectation are, you know? Because I just, I pull up to the front of the building and I see a set of beautiful granite steps, but they're like this, you know?
So...
So just keep that in mind as you move on, you know, because what you don't want and we don't want is to have to struggle to get the board satisfied based on what was the expectations were. You know, it's best to get it done right the first time, you know? So thank you, appreciate it.
So I am, I would like to move on, is there, I think we, is there any suggestion for modification of the conditions?
The only thing that we have struggled with is the parking, right? And we came up with something, what I'm concerned about is, this is gonna be sold, correct?
Yeah.
So new owner buys the property, right? They drive down the shared driveway, the easement, and they park in the back.
Don't think that's a parking spot that is allowed on the parking plan, but...
Correct, but he sells the place, he's gone, somebody else buys it, and what's to prevent people from just creating the problem we spent a lot of time trying to rectify? You know? I don't know, I don't think we really addressed it, we addressed it with landscaping, but do we need a black chain-link fence across that? Do we need to really make sure that is green space and doesn't become, I mean, we see it all over the city, we see cars that are driving over the sidewalks and they're parking on patches that are not legitimate off-street parking. And I just foresee that somebody's gonna say, hey, we got five cars, he didn't do anything wrong, he did everything we asked, right? He's on to his next project, somebody buys it, and now everybody's driving down that alleyway and parking in the back.
So a suggestion would be perhaps fencing in that small line of the rear yard from the right away?
Not trying to add a cost, but, you know...
Well, given that it's in the rear, I don't, I don't have a particular inclination as to what kind of fencing it might be.
Just, you know, you put something up that's pretty, you know, inexpensive and not concrete, it's gonna be taken down, right? Somebody puts up a vinyl fence, it's gonna get taken down and there's additional parking for us. And, you know, we tried to rectify the problem, but now we're causing an issue with the abutter, because that's a right-of-way.
Yeah.
And now we have an absentee, could potentially have an absentee landlord and it just becomes the parking mayhem that we're trying to avoid.
So again, looking for a condition that there would be fencing installed with concrete posts on the rear, I don't know what else to do.
I don't either, does it mean, need some granite curb, or does it, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't think we're gonna throw granite curb in the backyard. But I think a post, a fence supported...
Maybe a black four-foot chain-link fence that goes from, with a gate, so they can access their rear yard and, but yet it prevents it from being a parking issue.
Can I just say, because... Can I just say, because the way things are getting expensive, what if it's a first-time home buyer that buys a house and lives in one and maybe with his whole family and rent the other part? Now, if we put that chain fence and then he can still take him off, he can still root it and put it in his backyard because it belongs to him, that's his property at the moment. So the owner could do whatever he, what she want to do with, because if I own my property, it's my right to break all the fence down if I want to.
So under the conditions of the special permit, we can require as a continuing condition that the fence be maintained on the property. Because this was a special permit property, the conditions continue even after your construction is finished and you've sold the property to a new owner. It's part of the accommodation that we have between property ownership rights and the rights of the public, so. I'm going to propose that the condition be for, as you said, four-foot chain link fence to be installed, and I'm not talking about all the way around the backyard, just that one little line right there.
That is...
Between the rear yard and the right-of-way.
But I just want to say this, they're gonna keep adding stuff on this project when I'm already in the backlog. Like, you, we fucking understand what you guys are saying, but you have to understand that every little thing that I keep adding up, it keep costing me too. And right now, the property right now is, like I said, my loan for that property already expired because it took nine months before they could give me a permit. And I took a year loan and it expires on November 11th. And I have three more months which I renewed that loan to pay back that loan. So I do have my budget fixed to finish that project as ASAP. So if they keep adding things on top of that and then it just gonna keep getting worse and gonna get stressful on my side.
I understand. This is one condition. This is approximately 20 feet of fencing. I don't think 20 feet of fencing is going to break the project, and I don't think it's going to take you that long to install it. I don't think there's any other conditions that we were contemplating adding.
No, the only, the only thing we're up against now, time is money.
Yeah.
Right? He's an investor. We're in the wintertime now. We have to put a fence in. There's quite a bit of landscaping we have expectations for. Nothing's been done. He's probably going to want to sell this place in two or three months.
Yeah.
And how are we going to get everything on this list done?
So I feel like I've done my journey on the list and I've increased, not just putting any ordinary materials in the property, I put quality materials in the property now and put new windows, put a new roof, put a mini-split, which is, and I'm putting spray insulation, I mean, which is a good stuff for safe energy and it makes the environment neighborhood look nice and clean. So I'm just in the position right now that if I wasn't strong, I could have been a man at the hospital because I'm going through a lot just on this property. And I just feel like it's a lesson learned. So if they keep adding stuff, it sounds easy, but to buy that fence, it's not finer or wood fence, you talk about meter fence, and meter, anything meter is expensive now. And to come and install it, they would come and tell you they have to drill the holes and it's too much work and that's getting cool, you're gonna spend double. So that's what I'm saying.
Well, you know, first of all, this is the first addition we've talked about, right? You say keep adding stuff. We've just talked about this. Earlier, you said you really, doesn't seem like you're going to spend any effort on fixing the rear wall. So, you know, our anticipation was that rear of the property is a mess. It's just a bunch of old rocks kind of hodgepodge together. So if we kind of held to our petition and said, well, we wanted the wall put in properly, this was part of the special permit, right? Is that going to get taken care of? Or are you kind of saying that I can't or I don't want to do that?
You're talking about...
You know, if you're taking costs out of a certain part of the project, then we're kind of moving them over to a different piece of it, you know? I mean, there's a long list and I'm only one voice. There's other board members that may want all of this done as we had discussed, you know?
Yeah, we talk of...
Yet you have increased costs, but, you know, keep in mind, we're just here to grant some relief and we have some conditions. You're running into added costs as a developer, but, you know, that's...
Because...
...due diligence you do upfront before you buy a property, you know?
Yeah, I did, but code keep changing every day, so I didn't see this coming. For instance, I was gonna put regular insulation, but by code, have to put spray foam insulation. And if you put spray foam insulation to make it go in a better way with ecosystem, you gotta put mini-split. And you put a mini-split, it's two times putting like the board heat.
Yeah, that's kind of really not this board's...
I want to pause for a minute because I think we have our new building, our interim building commissioner with us?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So sorry, we haven't met yet?
No, we haven't. I apologize for standing up during this session, but I'm hoping to maybe shed a little bit of light.
That would be great, thank you.
For the board members, my name is Felix Zemmell. I'm the acting building commissioner for the city of Pittsburgh. Today is my first day in the office. I actually quietly started last week transitioning with outgoing building commissioner Mark Barbadoro. And I'm going to be working with the city during the transition period to try to help as smoothly as possible with the process. And Mercedes let me know about this meeting. And historically, I like to meet at least these zoning board members and let them know that I'm available for questions. And if you need me at a meeting, let me know and I'll be able to be there. But, and you saw me quietly sitting there through most of these. This one I stood up because I just wanted to give a little bit of insight, ideas, thoughts maybe for the board to consider with this. Because earlier in this hearing, you were also asking about a snow collection area. And the applicant had kind of balked at the idea of a snow collection area. And I totally understand the need for a snow collection area, especially if you've got a multifamily in a small, in a densely populated area, that that's very much needed and should not be necessarily passed off to the future owners to figure out. But as I also heard members say, that likely is going to be in the back. And so if we're going to be asking them to put up a four-foot fence, practically speaking, that four-foot fence is going to block access to that snow collection area unless they have a snow thrower with a pretty good throw on it to get over that fence. I would wonder if maybe the board might be interested in some sort of berm for the space, either granite curbing, concrete berm, or a landscaped berm, something to create a physical barrier that's at a different elevation so that cars can't just drive over it. But it also provides access for a snow blower to be able to throw the snow into the back area for proper snow collection and without impeding egress to the area. Maybe as a solution, I agree with the board that we need something from the engineer about that, about that wall, because I haven't seen a problem that an engineer can't fix. It just is a question about, about technical feasibility and cost. But I've seen quite a fair share of issues and engineers always find a solution. It just ends up being questionable.
Good point on the snow removal, but I'd be hard pressed that anybody is going to take the snow from the front of that property, go all the way down the shared right-of-way to the rear of the property and put snow there. It's not going to happen.
It's a condition of ours.
It's not going to happen. We're not going to be able to monitor it and...
Enforce it.
Enforce it. So we have to look at ways that it just kind of self...
Well, the enforceability quasi comes because we have the C.Click fix here in town. And if we're starting to get complaints from DPW or from neighbors of people throwing snow into their yard or into the street, then we have a pathway to, for enforcement on that. But it really needs to be clear, and I appreciate you put it in as a condition, because that then becomes part of the chain of title. And the future owners need to also make sure that they maintain that, maintain the snow collection area. And they can't claim ignorance at that point.
Open to boards.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the input.
We appreciate your attending the meeting.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I could say something. I think Michael did address the fact of putting a gate with the fence, and I think that may be an appropriate solution, that if snow is going to be pushed down the right-of-way from the front of the building into the back of the building, that may be a way to do it without impeding the contractor to actually push it down there. However, it does open the door for a car to, that same gate to be used for a car to go back there. So I really don't know what the right solution is, but...
So if the goal is simply to prevent parking in the backyard, then what we can do, because that's the goal, right? Prevent parking in the backyard. Allow snow storage if it does ever get back there. But I think what we could do is provide an alternative condition so that the permit holder can select the lease cost method. So we could state that either a chain link fence with post sunk into the ground be installed or a berm or concrete or other solid barrier. And I would say the height on that would probably need to be six to eight inches. So...
Madam Chair.
Along the rear yard. And I'm going to say right now, we have spent over a half an hour on this review. I really don't want to drag it out very much.
I just have one quick comment, if I may. Bowing myself, a berm is impossible to take a truck and push that. You need momentum to push the snow, and a berm would impair, would impede upon a truck going back there with a plow.
I'm not sure that a truck would fit there. I think only a snow blower is going to go that way. Because the right-of-way is so narrow between the two houses.
So you're saying that, okay. So you're not envisioning a truck going back there on the right-of-way?
I don't think it's possible, but...
Okay.
But I don't have a better solution for you, so unless somebody can come up with a better solution to this problem, I'm going to suggest that we add that as a condition, if this is important, vote on whether the condition should be added and reschedule the next review. So I'd first like to take a vote of whether, of the board members, whether they're in favor of adding the condition as stated. And I'm going to go round. Mr. Reynolds, would you be in favor? Mr. Byrne, would you be in favor of adding that condition?
Well, as we note on the board here that the vote was four to one. I didn't want this property revamped anyway, so I'm going to abstain from voting on that because this property does not warrant being brought back on the books.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. On the condition, would you be in favor of adding the condition?
Yes, a four-foot black chain link fence. It's visible, you can snow blow over it, and, you know, it's a visual. I'm just afraid a berm is going to be lost after six feet of snow.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher.
After six inches of snow, I'm sorry.
I associate myself with Michael on that.
Okay.
What do you guys want me to add? Adding, I'm just lost.
It's okay. So the condition to be added is that either a four-foot chain link fence with post sunk into the ground be installed or a solid berm be installed of a minimum of six, I'll say eight inches. And I'm just going to say solid, just on that one side, just on that one side of the rear yard. So between the rear yard and the house.
And then I was going to ask, can I, can I get my $5,000 check back so I can use on that to put that?
So that's not to be released until the conditions are completed. That's the reason that the funds were taken to be held as a guarantee of completion. I am going to look for a date to come back, and I don't want to make you come back more than you need to. I don't think it'll be done in Jan, in December. January? Do you want to come back in January?
Yeah, hopefully by that time I'll be done with the project. Yeah, everything should be all lined up.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just to be clear, my vote isn't for a concrete berm. We're heading into winter. It's for a chain link fence. It's visible, it creates a barrier, and it designates the green space and delineates the property line from the abutter and the right-of-way.
Okay. Then we're going to have to take a vote on that then. So I'm going to ask that you propose the continuance with the modification that you would prefer to see on the continuance.
Solo.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We're going to add conditions on this. I'd like to add a condition that the property can't be sold until the conditions are met.
You say what?
We don't have a restraint on sale. We only have a restraint on the special permit being subject to revocation upon transfer prior to certificate of occupancy. Is that the request that you're making? So if it's...
If that happens, you forfeit the $5,000.
Right now, it's upon completion of the project in accordance with the special permit. That's what it is right now. Okay. So we have a motion on the table, and so we need to request that Mr. McGlaughlin modify his motion to accommodate the second modification. So we have...
What do you think, Mike?
Modify the motion?
Want to amend it?
So that's a yes from him?
Okay.
Okay. So do I assume you're the second on the modified motion?
I will.
With the January review date, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 And I'm going to vote my conscience against, but that means the motion passes. So we have those modifications. What that means is we have the fencing required to be installed, and we are holding the certificate of occupancy. There would be a transfer if you sell the property or change the ownership prior to the certificate of occupancy, the special permit terminates, and so then that person would have to come back to us and have the special permit reinstated in their name. I appreciate that this was a long hearing, and I appreciate your staying through the hearing. I know you've done a lot of work on this property, and I know that you've experienced some unexpected difficulties, and I hope that the remaining course of the project is smooth for you. So we're going to end this review at this point and move on to the next matter. The next scheduled hearing is in January, okay? And that is January 9. Okay.
I just have a question if I leave. That I cannot sell if I'm done?
So you need to get this, that's why I asked what the date was. So the certificate of occupancy is held until we approve that the conditions are all completed. If you sell before you get the certificate of occupancy, then the next person has to come back and get a special permit from us again. That's the motion that just went before us and that was passed. The here, that this meet, this matter, this hearing is now concluded, and I need to move on to the next one on our... on to the next one on our, on our agenda. I encourage you to contact the building department. This is a recorded meeting. Review the recording of the meeting as well if you have some questions. The next matter we're going to call, again, just to make sure, is ZBA 2023-10. This is 21 Union Street. Louis Colton, is anyone here on this matter? If anyone is here remotely on this matter, please raise your hand. I see none. So we have a review here. I do see that there's some work being done on the property. I don't suppose, Mr. Commissioner, you would have any knowledge about that. Thank you. Do we have any city departments that have made comments on this property?
This is just a haircut that they
Okay. So on the plus side, there is a curb cut permit, and it's been applied for, not issued yet. And that is where they were taking down the left side of the building and creating parking, which I think we're all very happy about.
That's a comment.
Okay. That's not this matter, though. That's that matter. I don't think we have a comment on this matter. Anything else that you know of?
No, but I don't want to
Okay. So the applicant is not here. Did we receive any communication from the petitioner?
Stuck under there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It is a tripping accident.
So I'd like to have a comment on the continuation of this review.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have Mr. Byrne a comment on the continuation of the review?
No.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds? This is another no-show.
This is Union Street or?
Union Street.
What's the time for this when this had been added?
Let's continue it.
Yep. How many people, how many matters do we have on for December?
December is, I think, I think we have nine.
All right. Well, this will be 10. So I'd like to entertain a motion for a continuance of the review to December 12th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm just going to ask Ms. Mott if you can inform them of the review. All right. Moving on to our first continuance. So this is ZBA 2322. This is IVJ Group LLC, 87 through 91 River Street. This is the continuance of a special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming use buildings and change the structure to provide for a substantially different purpose from manufacturing to a multifamily development pursuant to 181-336. Welcome, and if you could, please state your name and city of residence or capacity to the board.
My name is Anthony Cleves. I'm with Haley Ward Design Engineers for the project here on behalf of the IVJ Group.
All right. Thank you, sir, for attending.
Thank you.
Again, we always appreciate having professionals with us. Yes, so Mr. Mazafaro is online as well. If you do wish to speak, Mr. Mazafaro, could you please raise your hand? Okay. So this is a continuation of the public hearing on this case. We will be taking comment from the public after the initial presentation. We did have a site visit, and I appreciate your offering the site visit to the board on this property. Could you, could you give us a summation of any updates, or, again, just a review of the relief that you're looking for? Because I'm not sure that I addressed it in what I just stated to you.
Yeah, sure. So we're before the zoning board for the alteration of an existing non-conforming structure. The, there's three buildings on the property. It's the building that fronts on River Street. The existing building is currently about 10 feet off of the front property line. The front yard setback in that zone is 20 feet. And so as that, it's non-conforming, and as part of the project, we're going to be restoring these old historic mills. That building in particular is not going to be expanded. There's not going to be an addition really on that. It'll be windows, updating the brick facade, you know, some entryways. The other two buildings, which are conforming, will have a new addition between the two of them. So that's the main reason that we're before the board is for that special permit. Since the time of the last hearing in September, we've been going through hearing to the Conservation Commission. This site is within the 200 reparations zone from the North Nashua River, and is also within the 100-year flood plain, both jurisdictions of the Conservation Commission. Since our last meeting, we've closed out the hearing process with the commission, and they voted to issue a order of conditions for that. We've also had one meeting with the planning board at their last meeting, and had some good discussions there. It's kind of a follow-up from the site visit. One of the planning members was on the site visit with the zoning board. So we had some follow-up discussions, some things they'd like to see on the updated plans, which happy to go through some of those comments if you'd like.
Maybe that would be great, because I'm not sure all of the members here have seen the meeting.
Yeah, sure. So the plan updates that we're going to be submitting to the board this week, one was from the fire department. We met with the fire department as part of the planning board site plan approval process. And one of their main comments was, there's an accessway between our third building and the building adjacent to Kelly Wood Products. And so it's a narrow strip in there, and so we had about a 12-foot wide area opening up to a 14-foot wide area for vehicular traffic, which meets the Pittsburgh zoning for traffic. But they asked if we could make that a little wider. And so we're trying to be cognizant of adding impervious surface and trying to maintain some landscaping. So in discussions with them, we said that if they would be okay with us adding what we consider reinforced turf. So basically adding a lawn area that's reinforced with some plastic cells and some stable material that you can drive on it, but we still maintain, you know, a reduced pavement area and maintain some landscaping. So that's a note that's being added to the plans. For some of the planning board comments, I'm going to be noting where EV-ready parking spaces would be located to meet the new stretch energy code. There'd be 15 spaces noted on that plan where those are going to be located. You maybe recall, between two of the buildings is a courtyard area that was going to be left for residents to utilize. Based on some of the comments from the task force meeting that we had with the city, going to have a fence go in at the end of that courtyard area to better secure that for the residents. Other comments that came up was, as you enter the project from Knottgag Street, the existing driveway that is utilized now for Kelly Wood Products in this property, as you come in on the left, there's some overgrowth in a tree that just is just unsightly. So they asked if we could remove some of that overgrowth and vegetation to kind of open that area up. So we're adding that note to the plan. Also in that same area, to help direct flow of traffic, we're going to put in a directional sign to make people entering this shared area know that if you go left, that's Kelly Wood Products. If you go right, that's the Ivor Johnson residential area. So just to kind of let people know which is which in that same location. And again, these are all, you know, feedback for the planning board on these comments. There's a metal staircase that used to be an old fire escape, we believe, on one of the buildings. And it's in need of some repair, so that was one of the comments they had. So we're adding a note to the plan to clean and repaint that, or we may actually just remove it. Haven't quite determined that yet. It's not need, we're not using it for fire access. It just becomes if it, if we keep it for historical purposes or not, or it just may come off. So we're kind of putting that note on the plan, one or the other. Either remove it or clean it and repaint it. The existing sidewalk on Knottgag Street seems to be in some disrepair. So one of the conditions that they talked about that they would probably add to the project is to have the sidewalk on Knottgag Street be removed and replaced. So we're going to add that note right to the plans, so it's documented on our site plans. And typically, as the city requires for removal and replacing a sidewalk, you also reset the granite curb that's there to go along with that. So that's going to be noted on the plans as well, to remove and just reset that granite curb. Along Knottgag, along Knottgag Street, there's also a chain link fence that's along there with a lot of overgrowth. So that chain link fence is going to come down, and we're going to replace that with like that black metal fence that you see on River Street that the city put in as part of the River Street improvement. So we want to match the consistency of that. So continue that around the corner down Knottgag Street. And also, they'd like us to add some low-level plantings along the front of the River Street building. In discussion with the fire department, the fire department preferred not to have any tall vegetation there because it can obstruct access to windows in an emergency. So the planning board asked us to put some low-level plantings in there, so we're showing that on our plans as well. And then there are a couple parking spaces, if you recall, between the two middle buildings that butts up against the courtyard area. And so that was an area that there were some concerns about people coming and going there, but also there was discussions about having some designated loading spaces. So we're going to denote two of those spaces as loading spaces and put signs there too as a spot for people to access for loading and unloading. And those are basically all the comments that we had received, and we're trying to address all of them. Our next planning board meeting with them is November 28th. And they want to leave their hearings open, and so hopefully we could come to a conclusion with your board, just in case there was any overlap there.
Was there any discussion of, after the first building, there's a parking area that has an exit onto the side street? Is that going to remain an open exit?
Yeah, so all the vehicular traffic, as we proposed, is going to maintain. So it's, if the area you're referring to, you come in off of Knottgag Street and you just continue straight between the Kelly Wood Products building on your left, not there?
No, on the right-hand side.
On River Street?
So as you enter from River Street, in between the white building, I believe is the Boardman building, and then, yeah.
Yeah, so that access will be maintained. We're not eliminating that access.
Okay, and the parking lot will exit to that access drive right there?
Yep, yep. So you can still have, you know, through traffic.
Mr. Boardman had appeared at the initial meeting and expressed some concerns about the circulation of traffic around his building. Did you make an attempt to meet with him and make any accommodations?
Yeah, the property owners met with Mr. Boardman, discussed the project in more detail, showed him some of the plans, went over some of the utilities, infrastructure, and my understanding was the meeting went very well, and he's, you know, happy with the project. And they're going to continue to work, you know, with all the neighbors. A project like this, you kind of really have to. It's a lot of shared interest there, but, you know, expressed how the water system, the water mains that run through there are going to be replaced. The sewer line that all the businesses there share, which is in that accessway that you mentioned, which I believe, my understanding is, there's been problems with that sewer line in the past. It's probably over 100 years old. That's going to be replaced with all new infrastructure. So it's going to be a good improvement for all the property owners there. But yes, they did have a meeting, and I believe it went well in support of
Was there an ability to collapse the easement that runs through the courtyard? The common right-of-way easement?
Yeah, I mean, that easement exists for the benefit of the buildings on our property. At one time, there was three lots. I think each of those buildings had its own lot. And so that easement that exists between those buildings with the courtyard is, was for the benefit of those two buildings. So being all one property owner now, that would, that would be able to be cleaned up. And I believe that, you know, as we continue through this process, the owners are going to look to kind of try and clean up some of those easements. Because we also are going to be, we've requested easements from Kelly Wood Products, for example, for some of this project. So there's going to be some updated easements that are going to take place for this.
Okay. And you're going to, you have the historic mills preservation credit, I think, that you're working on?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so this project, for part of the funding, they are going for the historic preservation for this. So it's, that's going to continue to be an ongoing process where they'll have to review and approve, you know, windows, for example, and things like that. But, yeah.
Okay, but the windows, for instance, will be preserved? The facade of the front building on River Street will be preserved?
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially, we're kind of at their mercy on what they can allow us to do. Yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to see if we have any city comments. So from the Board of Health, great for these buildings, great plan for these buildings would certainly be good for the River Street corridor. Thank you, Board of Health. And I think from the Planning Department, just noting the opening of the public hearing before the planning board and continued to November 28th. And I think that's all the comments we have from city departments. All right. I'm going to open this up for public comment before I go to board members. Thank you. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on this petition on for or against? Seeing none, is there any person virtually here who would like to make a comment on this petition on for or against? Please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none. I'm going to move to board members. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Byrne, any questions? Okay. Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
I do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
No, Madam Chair. Just clarification on when we vote on what we're referencing.
Okay. So
Three different components of the bylaw referenced.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
So we have a change from manufacturing to a multifamily development. That is Section 181.74 of the ordinance, and the multifamily development requires a special permit from the planning board if issued. I understand you have a change of use for pre-existing non-conforming.
So we're filing under the Adaptive Industrial District, so it's a, you know, through special process, by right through special permit?
Right.
Yep.
336 is going to, I'm going to take out my book and be sure I have my reference correct. So 336 is the abandoned property. 333 is the modification of the use of a non-conforming structure. And again, it was the front yard setback that is 10 feet instead of 20, as required in the district. And then because that is a special permit, we have Section 181.94, regular special permit criteria.
Just wasn't sure if we need multiple votes or if we can roll some of these together.
Well, I think we need a vote on the abandoned property resuscitation, and then a second vote on the conversion of the non-conforming structure. Correct. So if we look at 336, and we're looking under 3366, So, if we look at 336 and we're looking under 3366 for the special permit, our criteria is follows. The structure use is illegally non-conforming structure use. In other words, at one point in time, it was permitted in the district. Or was constructed prior to zoning, which I believe is the case with this building. Premises are determined to have adequate parking and to serve the structure and use in conformity with the parking ordinance. I'm going to ask you to verify that you have a adequate number of parking spaces to serve the number of units. Number of units?
We have, just wait. 65 total units. And that's broken up by 50 units of one-bedroom and 15 two-bedroom. Requiring 73 parking spaces and we're providing 77.
Thank you. Then we need to look at the regular special permit criteria. So, our general criteria is that the benefit to the city and the neighborhood outweighs the adverse effects of the proposed use. Taking into account the following: social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. And again, since you're a professional, I'm going to ask you to respond to each of the criteria if you could, sir. Looking at 181.942. 148 at the bottom.
Yeah. So, social, economic, community needs which are served by the proposal. Yeah. So, we're providing, you know, additional housing, which is, is a need for this, for the city of Pittsburgh. So, absolutely meet that one.
Thank you. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. I think you talked about adequate spaces.
Yeah. We've designed the, the traffic flows in accordance with the Pittsburgh zoning and, you know, maintaining the, the accesses that are there, widen them in some cases to accommodate that traffic flow and to accommodate the emergency vehicles as well. So...
And there is at one side of the building, I think, a one-way flow, correct?
Yep. With signage, with do-on-enter signs and, and whatnot to denote that. So, it's safe, safe travel.
And the fire department expressed its satisfaction with the access that it has.
Yeah. We had discussed that when we met with them to have that as wide as we could and, and using that reinforced turf to provide that additional access for them.
Adequacy of utilities and other public services. You're replacing the water and sewer main.
Yep. So, we're, we're surrounded by water and sewer in the, in the streets, municipal water and sewer. There are lines that, that run through our property that service our property as well as neighbors around us of the, of the former Ivory Johnson Mills complex. And so, we're replacing those water mains, replacing the sewer line. So, there is adequate service for the municipality and we're operating our own services within the property.
Are electrical utilities going to be buried or are you still going to have the poles?
So, they're going to be buried within the site from, from our transformer to the building. It would be overhead from, from Knokkeig Street to the transformers and then it'll run underground from there.
Thank you. The neighborhood character and social structures.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, it's within character of, of the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's an old mill, historic mill neighborhood.
And we have two other recently renovated historic mills that are in close proximity, correct?
Yes. Yeah. There's, there's one right across Knokkeig Street. There's one across the river, the Yarn Works. There's another mill just up the street on the other side of Sheldon Street, very similar project, restoration of a mill for, for residential. So, it's, it's in harmony with, with the character of the neighborhood.
And impacts on the natural environment, including drainage. And you said you had received an order of conditions from CONSCOM.
Yep. And then that's another one of the, the upgrades to the project. Right now, there's very minimal stormwater system on the property. So, we're, we're putting in new stormwater systems for that too.
Are you feeding into the city's stormwater system or exiting into the river behind you?
To the river.
Approved by the CONSCOM?
Yep. And that's, that's where the water goes now. So, we have to send it back there.
Putting a pipe in between?
Yeah.
Potential fiscal impact, including impact on city services, tax base, and employment?
So, it's, it's, you know, it's, you know, being a reused building, you're going to have more revenue created for the businesses that are in that area. You'll have more people to, to service some of those commercial properties that are in there. Hopefully, the commercial property across the street will, will be revitalized again to, to have some of that. Impact on city services, again, water and sewer would be, would be fine. Would be maybe emergency services might be the, the biggest impact and, and working with, with police and fire, providing adequate fire protection. Buildings will all be sprinklered. They'll have all updated technology that the police and fire acquire. Looking into having cameras, you know, throughout. So, it's, so, you know, providing, continue to work with, with them in, in a, in a safe property. Which having the property redeveloped will actually maybe provide some more safety there. Where sometimes there is not people there to, to monitor the property and you can have, can have incidents there. So...
Is there any projection of the increased tax payment to the city after redevelopment?
I'm not sure about the, the tax. I don't have enough information to comment on the taxes. I don't know what, what it is now and what it'll be later.
Can you approximate the investment that will be made in this property?
Maybe one of the owners online can, can talk about that. They have more of the, the money that they're looking for.
I'm getting a hand up. So, I'm going to allow Mr. Mazafaro to speak. Sir, you are muted. So, you should unmute. There you go. If you can please just state your name and city of residence and then give your comment.
Yeah. Good evening, Christine. I'm, I'm Albin Mazafaro. I live in Long Island, New York, in the town of Stony Brook. And I am one of the owners of the Ivory Johnson property. I think I can answer both your questions. I think the tax base right now is approximately 15,000 a year. And we estimate it could run to as high as 75,000 to 80,000 a year once, once we complete.
Very good.
And, and then your other, what was your other question? Of the total, total budget?
Approximate budget.
Yeah. Approximately $25 million.
How, and are you secure in the funding for this project at this point or are you still working on it?
We are working on it. We, we have been quite successful, in my opinion, of, of getting grants and, and, and credits. Historical tax credits as well as brownfield credits as well as a number of grants from Mass Development as well as others. And we, we have been, you know, we've been gathering these things and trying to, to essentially create our best equity position before we approach the lenders. You know, so we are, we are planning to complete the project financing with a lending package. But we're waiting for the opportune time. And the, the timing, you know, with interest rates is a little difficult right now. And, and considering where we are in the project, we, we don't need to chase financing at this point. But we're, we're at the point where we're putting ourselves in the best position possible to move forward. So, I think financing, you know, will be, will be something that will come along when it's needed. And I think right now, we're, we're in good shape and we're looking forward to completing the project.
Do you have a, a, a projection that you would begin construction within 12 months?
Assuming permits, yeah. I believe that's very possible, yes.
Any other comment on the timeline for us? Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mazafaro. Is there any other question or comment for the applicant before we close the public hearing? Any other comment before I close the public hearing and move to deliberation?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, the public hearing is closed without objection. I would like to review any comments or proposed conditions from board members. And comment would be on allowance. Proposed conditions would be on condition of allowance. Mr. Byrne? Comment on allowance?
No, I, I think that this should be allowed. I, I like the idea. I think it's wonderful. I still don't like the idea of having the abutted buildings not being taken over prior to them starting on their residential part of the project. But there's nothing you can do about that. So, fine, but deliberate.
Any conditions that you would entertain or be concerned about? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
I'm supportive and ready to move forward.
Any conditions? Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah. My comment is that I'm very much in favor of this project and looking forward to it being redeveloped.
And Mr. McLaughlin, any comment or conditions?
No. I just, you know, make whatever votes we need to make in reference to specifics of the special permit criteria. I, I think that, you know, a project of this scope is going to go before multiple boards. Planning is going to take care of site plan. You know, the enormity of this project is, you know, such that it should take care of itself. You know, all the multiple visits and all the code. This is a ground-up restoration. So... Appreciate the, everybody's endeavors on this one.
For myself, I, we, I very much appreciate the redevelopment of these buildings. I look forward to the further improvement of the River Street corridor. I have some concerns about, I, I don't think anybody's going to resume the use of that railroad track on the right-hand side. I do have some concerns about the circulation of the delivery vehicles from Mr. Boardman. So, I do hope that something can be worked out there to make sure that there's no traffic flow issues or that if they do arise, that, you know, you would take some action to address it. That's an ongoing business and I definitely want to see it keep going. And, but at the same time, I, I think this is a major project for the city and a major redevelopment that I hope gets accomplished. I also trust that the Planning Board is going to work out the fine details with you. So, as far as conditions, there are really very few that I would want to include. And the first would be that all of the conditions of the Planning Board are incorporated into the special permit from the zoning board. And violation of one is cause for revocation of the special permit either way. Picking out a few of the comments, and I don't think these are anything different that has already been discussed with you, but I do want to make sure they're delineated out because the Planning Board hasn't reached its final decision yet. First, that the, that the original windows on the front building, which I think is 87 River Street, the one closest to River Street?
91.
91 is closest. So, that the windows facing 91 River Street? Windows facing River Street on 91 River Street are retained in their original historical character. I think that is what is required under the historic mills credit anyway. But credits come and go and I would like to make sure those windows stay. So... The second condition would be the replacement of the chain link fence on Knokkeig Street with black metal fencing. And reconstruction of the repair, reconstruction of the sidewalk, including resetting the granite curbing, I think. And then the final one would be that any right-of-way used by the occupants of the building, including areas not subject to the current right-of-way, obtain an updated easement agreement to be provided to the city for review before recording. So, in other words, if you are expanding beyond the right-of-way that you already have, for instance, the 14 feet near Kelly Wood Products, that the updated easement agreement be provided for the city for review before recording and delivery. That's all the conditions I would suggest, but I would also suggest a review. Not too close. I'm thinking next November, because that is 12 months out. And hopefully, construction will have started by then. All of the permitting will have been started by then. The financing will be in place to have, have that happen. So, I'd entertain a motion or any differing comment if anybody wants to examine any of those conditions.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. Just want clarification. Am I making two separate? One under 181-336 and one under 181-74?
Yes. And I think the second one will contain the conditions.
Okay. Any preference on which you prefer?
The 336 is going to have to happen first.
Okay. So, I will make that motion for case number 2023-22 for IBJ Group LLC, 87, 89, and 91 River Street. Make that motion with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Just only like to make a comment that, you know, based on the conditions for a special permit, that the applicant meets the, the criteria, six million points.
I would agree. And do we have a second motion?
I'll make the second motion under 181-74.
332 or 333, excuse me? 74 being the multifamily housing provisions. So, do we have a motion under 181-333 for modification of the use of a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None unanimously passes. Special permit is granted. I wish you good luck, please. The zoning board is not always privy to the interior discussions of the Planning Department because they are very busy and so are we. If updates could be provided to the ZBA as well as you're updating the city departments, we would always appreciate it. Okay. Thank you for the investment in the city and good luck with everything.
Thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you too.
All right. Now, Mr. Reynolds, you have to go. Thank you for coming. I appreciate your coming. The next matter is ZBA 2327, Mark Brito. This is Zero Cobbler Drive. And this is a continuance of a hearing on a special permit under 181-313-E5. Yes. Yes. We don't.
Yeah, we'll have to move it to next month.
Okay. I am going to take this, just a moment. Is anybody here for 285 River Street? Given that our esteemed member, Mr. Reynolds, did have to leave, and we have a conflict of interest with another board member, we are not going to have a quorum to hear the matter tonight. Which is unfortunate to discover at 8:38 PM as you've waited here. Yes. So, what I am going to do is, and the applicant is here?
Yeah, that's us.
Okay.
Thursday.
I'm going to pause for a moment, because I don't want to keep them any longer to not be heard. If you don't mind for just a moment. What we're going to have you do is weekend.
Yeah. Problem solved. Thursday?
Publication. This is the first public hearing, but we're continuing it.
We're hoping to continue it. We've done that a hundred times.
We have forty-eight hours.
Any members of the audience, we could hear them now, right?
Yeah. Make notice. Never seen it reviewed, but we've always done it that way.
We still require forty-eight notice, forty-eight hours' notice of the notice of the hearing, yeah. So, that means that we would not be able to hear this matter if Mercedes went right now until 8:39 on Tuesday. And it has to go to the city clerk's office before you can publish notice of it.
I'm confused. Can't continue it?
Doesn't meet the timeframe.
We have to give, we have to give forty-eight hours' notice of
On a continuance?
We have an exception for items that
Unperceivable.
Mm-hmm. I would think that
My inclination would be to put it over for Thursday. Do Thursday?
Well, huh? Taking back on this Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Okay.
Will we be, will be able to have our discussion on Thursday?
I know of no board member who's going to be absent on Thursday. And I will communicate to that board member that they need to be here. And what we'll do is schedule you first on the agenda. There are a few matters on Thursday, but first on the agenda. And I, I would agree that this, this issue was not known until now, so it would fall into the exception to the forty-eight-hour rule. But we would need to amend the notice with the city clerk as soon as possible tomorrow morning. We'll need a
I'm a little bit confused.
So, we need a four, four persons to have a quorum to vote on a matter. We have one member who has an appearance of a conflict of interest, and therefore, we believe it would be best for them not to participate in this matter, because
That's me.
Two?
Me.
Oh, okay.
Due to a family relationship.
So, you would open the hearing, the gentleman would recuse himself, and there would be a motion to continue? You have to stand up and walk out? Right.
I don't think we need this.
No, not for Thursday.
Right. Okay. So, I am going to call this matter ZBA 23-21, Lauren Nario, 285 River Street. It's an application for a special permit under 181.313-D11 and 12 to continue the use of an auto sales and add auto body services pursuant to Section 181.94, located in the Neighborhood Business District. I am going to open the public hearing, seeing the petitioners present. I'm going to ask if any member of the public has a comment to offer on for or against this petition. Seeing none, seeing no hands raised online, I'm going to ask any member of the board who has, he has already left, which is good. Just to announce, Mr. Gallagher had a conflict of interest due to a family relationship with the applicant, and this was not a prohibited one, but the appearance of one, thus leading to him recusing himself. Given his recusal, I would ask for a motion to continue the hearing to Thursday, November 16th at 6:00 PM.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The motion carries. So, that would be the September 22 was the application. I don't think we're Yes, okay. So, on Thursday, 6:00 PM, we will continue the public hearing on your application. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. But, you know, we have to make sure that we abide by our rules, so I hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Is there anything I have to do before Thursday? Do I have to go to the clerk's office?
No, so you're, we're still well, well within the deadlines, and we've opened the hearing, so we're just going to continue this two days.
Thank you very much.
It just needs to be a board of four to hear the case. Brian having to recuse and Jim having to leave, it just was the perfect storm.
All right, you can let Mr. Gallagher know he can re-enter. And what I'm going to do is recall you, sir, ZBA 23-27, Mark Brito. This is Zero Cobbler Drive. A continued hearing on a special permit under Section 181.313-E5 of the zoning ordinance to open a contractor's yard in a rectified 4,000-square-foot steel building to be used for storage pursuant to Section 181.94 in the industrial district. Welcome, sir. And I, I have an unrelated question that I just wonder if you might answer quickly. There's a very large pile of dirt a distance behind your building, not on your property. It might be on the airport property.
Okay.
It seemed much larger than the last time I had been there. Has that accumulated? That the airport's construction?
I believe that's the airport construction.
I just wanted to know. Thank you for letting me know. Okay, so what I would like to do, Mr. McLaughlin, since this was opened at the last hearing, I think during my absence, I would like you, if you don't mind, to continue the questioning for the applicant.
All we did was continue it because we had no information. I'm sorry. The plan was submitted the night of the meeting, and we continued it so the board would have a chance to digest all the information before we proceeded.
Okay. Can you briefly summarize the project for us?
Absolutely. For the record, Chris Anderson was Handigan Engineering, civil engineer for the project. So, it's the intent of the applicant to continue to utilize an existing contractor's yard as part of the overall project. It's the intent to construct a 4,000-square-foot structure with loading doors and a small office area in order to facilitate the continued use of said contractor's yard. We are currently going before the planning board. They've continued us until the zoning board has had their decision made. There is no wetlands on the property, so we're not subject to any of the conservation restrictions upon that. The proposed building will be situated closer to the northern portion of the property line. Access will be provided off an existing paved opening that's at the northern portion of the property. This will extend into a paved parking area for the employees of the facility itself. This will also lead into a broad-open, re-grind pavement, storage area as it currently stands now. As part of the overall project, we will be also providing a new curb opening along the satellite portion of the property, primarily for traffic flow purposes. The existing driveway opening kind of empties out into a very convoluted traffic pattern. So, in order to improve the safety of that intersection, if you will, we're proposing to relocate the exit point of the vehicles further south in order to have proper sightline distances and ability to make the appropriate turning maneuvers. The property is located exclusively within an industrial zone. We have abutting industrial uses, including a recycling facility, a construction company building, and several other various uses, including the airport itself. So, this is an exclusively heavily industrial zone. It's also located at the end of a dead-end road, or just shy of the dead, end of the dead-end, with no through-traffic or residential properties in the area. So, this is a very well-suited location for this kind of use and the continued use within the city. With that being said, if there's any questions from the board, be more than happy to answer them.
Is Zero Cobbler Drive a private way or a public way?
It's a public way.
And this is going to be utilized by the owner of Brito Oil?
Brito Oil is the landowner. They currently lease out the property to a pipe storage facility. So, if you were to go to the property now, it's currently utilized as a pipe facility, stores pipe for use in various construction projects throughout the area.
Okay. Is the proposal that all of the storage would be contained inside, or it would be outside as a true contractor's yard would be?
It would be located outside like a true contractor's yard, distributed throughout the property, similar to what it is now. The proposed building could, will have some storage capacity within it, but it's the intent to be primarily as a supplementary to the actual contractor's yard.
So, will this be along the concept of a building with storage that's subletted to different contractors for the purpose of their particular businesses?
At this point in time, it's only going to be the single occupant user. So, the current contractor yard pipe company will be utilizing this building as part of their day-to-day operations.
What's, what, can you provide a general description of the equipment and trucks that are going to be entering and exiting?
So, the, the raw materials that typically come to the site come on your standard tractor-trailer vehicle, which all our design, our driveways and entry points have been designed to accommodate that. That's the standard vehicle that usually just brings the materials in. The materials are sometimes processed on-site, cut, for lack of a better term, before being removed to another project site, if you will. And those are typically done by flatbeds and other kind of vehicles, or, again, a tractor-trailer.
Are you, is there any setback relief, or are you in compliance with all setbacks?
We're in compliance with all setbacks, and we're actually providing an additional landscape buffer along Cobbler Drive. If you go to the site right now, it's a kind of a chain-link fence with overgrown brush. It's the intent to try to clean up that brush a little bit, make it more presentable, and then planting evergreen plants and trees along this right-of-way to help shield Cobbler Drive from the property further.
How about the fence?
Fence will remain as a chain-link fence. Some parts of it have kind of degraded over time, but for security purposes, obviously, we want to have the property enclosed, so any damaged fence components will be replaced.
How far is the steel building from the front property line? How close is it to Cobbler Drive?
It's approximately 68 feet. And the, the zone is industrial in this part of the city, so that's a 20-foot setback.
And the parking for employees, et cetera, is going to be in front of the building?
It'll be in front of the building between Cobbler Drive and the building. Based on usage, it's based, we're providing parking based on a warehouse use, because it's similar to what it's going to be used as. Per zoning, you need four spaces. We're providing five.
And the traffic pattern, you said you're moving the exit further south. I think that's closer to the turnaround?
Correct, yes.
Is it going to be a one-way, one entrance in and out, or is it going to be in, and are you still going to utilize the other entrance in a circular pattern?
So, the existing entrance will still be continued to be used as an entry point only. We're providing signage to restrict vehicular movement through that area. So, your standard, it's been designed to accommodate the tractor-trailer vehicle to make the turning maneuvers to get into it without obstructing parking capacity. So, that's been restricted solely to as an entry point. The exit point is designed to accommodate both entry and exit, so if in the eventuality that's a, a vehicle doesn't want to make that turn, they can continue down Cobbler Drive and enter into the property that way as well.
What's going to be the signage?
There won't be any freestanding pylon signings or anything like that. There might be a small, just placard on the side of the building saying the property address and stuff like that, but it's the intent not to install any significant signage on the property.
And this is not intended to be sold, it's going to continue to be owned and operated by the current donor, Brito Oil?
Brito Oil or the Realty Group with them will continue to own the property at this point in time.
So, we have Mark Brito as the applicant?
Yes.
Should there be an NTT associated with that?
It should be BOC, Pittsburgh Trust was the applicant. Yep, BOC, Pittsburgh Trust was the applicant on the application. Mark Brito is the trustee, if you will.
Trustee of that, and the trust is the owner of the real property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to look for any public comment now. Do you have any, anything to add before I do that?
At this point, no, I do not.
Okay. So, we have no attendees online. I'm going to ask if anyone present would like to make a comment on for or against this petition. I don't see any. Do we have any comments from city boards, this one? So, we have a comment from the planning department. The application for site plan approval is before the planning board. The public hearing was opened on October 24th and continued to November 28th. The planning board is awaiting our decision before they take any action. Going to ask our new building commissioner, on the off-chance he might have any comment on this, but I would expect not.
I haven't seen the plans yet, so I can't comment on it. Probably be able to within a week, but unfortunately.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to look to any board members for questions. And, Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to go to you first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, my questions were answered when I did the site visit with the applicant. I personally feel that constructing a building of that nature is in keeping with the area, and it sort of completes the area, because to my knowledge, that is the only lot that doesn't have a building. So, I think adding a new building to it would most definitely improve the area, so I am in favor of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Byrne, any comments or questions? Mr. McLaughlin, any comments or questions?
No, just curious. It's kind of used as a contractor's yard now. What's, what's changed that's triggered this?
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
My conversations with the previous inspector was that it's kind of expanding the non-compliant use under the current zoning. So, when the yard was originally put in, it was fine, but now they were putting a new building on it, it modifies that non-compliant use. So, hence.
But the use is allowed under special permit in the district?
Yes.
Are you at all within the evasion easements of the airport? Do you have to seek permission, building so close to the airport from the FAA?
So, our office has worked with the airport in the past. It only really applies when you get in excess of 35 feet in building height. This building is only 18 to 20 feet tall, so we're well below that threshold.
Thank you. Since you are a professional, I am going to ask you to respond to the special permit criteria. We have here an application that is subject to just Section 94, so that is just the regular special permit criteria. So, I'm going to have you respond to these criteria, which are under Section 181.942. We first, we have to find that the benefit to the city and the neighborhood We first, we have to find that the benefit to the city and the neighborhood outweigh the adverse effects of the proposed use, taking the following into consideration: the social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal.
So we're currently intending to, and I provide these in writing as well, so I'll just paraphrase it for the purpose of brevity. We're currently looking to redevelop an underutilized property by providing the, the new building itself. Because of the location in a very exclusively industrial portion of the city, it allows us to provide a service to other tenants, or sorry, other residents in the city, by allowing contractors to be able to come and store their materials in the city in order to alleviate any kind of congestion or time constraints on that perspective. And due to the nature of this area, it's becoming very difficult to find open pieces of industrial land that are very well-suited for this kind of use, so by providing this use, we're actually trying to make it more suitable for any other contractors in the future. And we're keeping this out of a, as I said, the residential districts, and providing a general improvement to the tax base by bringing additional business into the area.
Great. I, I would say you just covered all of the special permit criteria in that statement, correct?
Very well worded. Thanks.
All right, we appreciate that.
No problem.
All right. Unless you have any further comment, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I have no further comment.
Okay. Without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing, and as I do, I'm just going to note to the applicant, we are a four-member board here tonight. That means that you need unanimous consent from this board in order for allowance. We do offer the opportunity to go to the next meeting where we might have a five-member board to offer you where you still only need four.
Yep.
Do you wish to continue tonight?
No, ma'am.
You want to wait for the five-member board?
No, I want to continue with tonight, sorry. I meant, I thought you meant continue to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any discussion from the board on allowance of this use?
No, I'm happy with it.
I just want to say the use is appropriate for the district.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
It's not going to change other than a building. It's going to be landscaping. The, the property owner has obviously demonstrated with his other business that it's well-kept, it's landscaped, it's the best of the existing businesses as far as aesthetics in that area. So to double up on that, it's an allowed use by special permit. The applicants demonstrated that they meet the criteria. I'm all in favor of this.
I agree. Mr. Gallagher, any comment?
Yeah, not really, other than I, I look at this as a nice improvement to, to Cobble Street in terms of consistency with what is currently there. It does look currently a little off because that is the one parcel of land that does not have a building, and to have something structured there with proper entrance ways and exits ways, and I'm sure the storage of the piping in a more organized fashion is, is, is a plus to the area, so I am in favor of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Looking at, and I am also in favor of the allowance of this petition. I think the use is appropriate to the area, I think it's a necessary use. I agree that we have a good track record from the applicant in the keeping of his other building across the street, and he will be right there to monitor what's going on. I do want to think about some conditions, and so this is what I propose, and just because I don't want to open the public hearing again, I'm just gonna say that I think this project should probably be opened and completed within 12 months.
Yeah, it should be completed, it's pretty straightforward, it's just getting the materials.
So what I'd look for, for conditions were, number one, of course, incorporation of the planning board conditions as a condition of the special permit, which means that violation of those could revoke both approvals. I do want to have that chain link fence replaced. I do think it needs replacement rather than repair. And I want to make sure that construction is in conformity with the plan that was submitted. Do you have the date of the plan?
September 5th, 2023.
I do want to just call out that landscaping to be installed along the chain link fence. And exterior storage located close to the rear property line. Site to be kept clean and free of construction debris. It's a little bit of an odd condition when it's a contractor's yard during construction. And then I would look for a review date, and I'm thinking if we have a completion date about 12 months out, I think an update around nine months out might be nice. And so that would put us to the July meeting for 2024. Anyone have any conditions that they would like to add?
Just that the conditions of the planning board become those of the special permit for the ZBA.
Thank you. All right. And what is the July 2024 meeting date, Mercedes?
July 9th.
July 9th? Oh, good, right after 4th. Okay, so the review date would be July 9th. Is there any indication that the board would like to hold the certificate of occupancy? I also agree it's not necessary in this case. All right, I'd be looking for a motion on the allowance of the special permit with conditions.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-27 for Mark Brito at Zero Carburet Drive.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Passes 4 to 0. Congratulations on the allowance of the permit. Thank you for all your professionalism in this materials that you submitted to us. We very much appreciate it.
No problem, thank you very much.
Okay, good luck on the project. Yes. That was 285 River Street.
They're coming Thursday.
Yep, they're coming Thursday. All right, the next matter is ZBA 23-33, Henry Jeneo. This is 118-120 Intervent Road. Request for a special permit under Section 181.336 to reinstate and change the use on a vacant or abandoned non-conforming three-family structure to a less gestational non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling after a fire pursuant to 181.94, located in the neighborhood business district. Welcome.
Hello.
Can you please each state your name and the city you live in?
I'm Rich Jeneo, Lemister, Massachusetts.
Antonio Medina, part of the, I mean, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
Lawrence Masz.
Lawrence Masz, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. So I am going to open the public hearing. This is your first time that we've seen you. Yep, first hearing. And so you submitted an application to us that I'm going to get out. Okay. And I did a site visit on this, and this is a property where there was a fire.
Correct.
Do you know the date of the fire?
According to the reitor that we bought it from, February 17, 23.
2023?
Yeah.
Okay, so a very recent fire. Okay. Was it, do you know whether, was it vacant before the fire, or?
No, there was people living there.
There were people in there? Yeah? Can you please give us a brief overview of what the project is?
Well, we bought it, and it was a three-family, and one side burned, so instead of doing three-family again, we're just going to do a two-family, and it'd be quick to do that. It's a lot easier.
So you submitted, you submitted some plans from an engineer that showed the building and showed what you were proposing to do on the inside of the building. Am I right in thinking that this is a three-bedroom on the first floor and a four-bedroom on the second floor?
Three and three.
Three, three?
Yeah.
How many bathrooms?
One each apartment.
One each? Okay. And how is the entrance, do they have separate entrances?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
Do you already have the separate meters installed for the utilities?
Yeah, there's three, but we're going to remove one.
Going to have the landlords, or are there no common areas with the utilities?
Right now?
So normally when you have, I assume that this is going to be a rented?
We're going to flip it.
You're going to flip it? Okay, so you're going to reconstruct it and then sell it? So the, that person may rent it, or they may occupy it, you don't know? Okay. So normally when you have rented space, there's, there's going to be some space that is common area that belongs to the landlord, and the landlord has to have the utilities on that. I'm going to pause for a moment because I think Mr. Commissioner might have a comment on this as he's standing.
Just stretching it.
Or just stretching.
I don't have anything additional to what you're saying.
Okay.
Other, I'll hope to hear whatever I'm saying.
So normally there would be the third meter is required for the landlord, so I would just check and make sure you're in compliance with what you need to do on that. I'm sure the building department can give you some guidance on that, but also you should, of course, have a good electrician pulling permits, being licensed, knowing what they're doing on that issue. I was curious, you have a deck off the side of the property, right?
A what?
You have a deck in your plans.
Oh, yes, that's where it burned, the side that burned. We're going to build a deck if it's possible.
Okay. So I'm just going to ask, there's a foundation there, right?
Yeah.
There's a foundation from the old building. Is it a full foundation, or is it a crawl space?
It's a full foundation.
Full foundation. Are you putting the deck on top? Is it, is it an issue with the cost of taking that down?
Well, I was thinking to put in some dirt in there, and then do the, the deck on top if it's possible by the runner.
So it would be filled in?
Correct.
It wouldn't be left as a basement space?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see what the parking was on this plan.
Oh, yeah, so we got the call today, and we ran it through the engineer, and he just did it, so I don't want if you want to see it.
If you don't mind giving that up, because I have to keep whatever we look at?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got three copies.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. These are a few copies of the same thing?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, thank you. Just going to pause a moment to look at this. Oh, yeah, that would be great. So you're proposing four spaces, and they're all in front of the building?
Correct.
Yeah.
We've got a, we've got almost a five-foot setback here for the rear setback. Over here, it's like just a two-foot setback.
There's a variance already exists.
Oh, it sounds like it's a non-conforming structure, and so this is reconstruction after, after a catastrophe, and they're reducing the, reducing the level of nonconformity by converting it from a 3 to a 2.
Are you going to stick to the existing footprint of the building?
On the new one?
Will, will the new construction, will it change the foundation? Will it be bigger?
No, same, same.
Will it be smaller? It's going to be the same foundation?
Same, yeah.
And the property's, it's going to be the same size?
Correct.
Okay. I know you're not rebuilding that side over there, but it's going to be the same size?
Same.
So one of the things that did concern me is on your plans, and I appreciate that they were stamped by an engineer, which is, you know, a good start, but the engineer has written on these plans that, where it was? This is not to be relied upon as land or property line survey used for recording, preparing indeed description. I did not set corners. The building location and offsets are approximately located on the ground and are shown for determination of compliance with zoning. So in other words, he didn't actually go out there and measure.
He did.
He, so he gave me a plan that said that he, that this isn't measured on the ground, which he may have gone and done.
Mr. Devers is not a licensed surveyor, so he can't do meets and bounds survey, but he is a civil engineer. I actually know, I, I know Mr. Devers. He is a civil engineer, but as the building department, I'd require before, before issuing you a demo permit, that those corners would have to be pinned, and if this board is going to grant this, this special permit, that they'd have to stay within the confines of all of those pins by a surveyor with a, because especially looking at this, you're about five feet at the rear on one end and less than two feet from the deck. This is going to really need, really need pins and proper, proper delineation by a licensed surveyor before, before I, as the building commissioner, would be comfortable issuing a building permit, even if this board grants a special permit, because I'd keep it to, to what is existing, and I'd ask the board to just make it a condition that it has to be no expansion beyond what's existing, and I know that our zoning ordinance doesn't count freestanding decks or roof overhangs, but because of how tight this is, I would possibly ask, because this is a special permit, that those may be conditions as well, that those be, those be factored in.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And so that also plays into the parking plan. We need to make sure that the spaces are the right size, and will fit in the space that he's marked on that, and when we don't have a, a survey that says I measured, and this is how long we have to the, I, I'm going to talk if we can work, work with this, but I think that, you've just heard the building commissioner say you're going to have to produce that plan before you get the permit.
Okay.
So, so I would be prepared to do that.
Okay. It's going to be a tight turn off of, off of Intervale.
So it's a, it's a strange triangular piece of property across the street from the big distribution center that I think will open, so.
Yeah.
And you do have, you do have the parking kind of coming in and then backing out into that roadway, so it does. into that roadway, um, so it does cause me a little concern about the traffic, how that's gonna be handled there. Um, and that's just a comment, I don't know that there's a solution to it, because I don't think you can fit parking on the other side. I think you have about a, two feet, two feet off the property line. Have you talked to DPW about whether you need a curb cut or not?
No.
For the driveways? Is there curbing there or no curbing?
No, there's no curbing.
Okay, great. What is your timeline for construction after you receive the permit?
Um, probably about six months.
Do you have the funding available for the project?
Yep.
Is it a financed project?
Correct.
Are you performing the work yourself, or do you?
Uh, contractor.
You have a contractor you're working with? Um, so is this the first time that you flipped a property, or do you have some experience in that?
I got some experience.
Could you tell me about that, please?
Uh, so I, I have one, working right now on Athol. I'm closing another one up right over there in Athol, and I used to own, uh, Pritchard Street here in Pittsburgh, and now it's street.
Uh, which, is it, which Pritchard Street property?
Ninety-four, right by the police station.
Is that the one that was painted green?
Uh, no, no, right in the corner.
Oh, okay, right on the corner. So you're a couple years into flipping properties? Have you always been able to complete the project, or have you ever had to sell it prior to completion?
No, I always completed.
And your contractor has the availability to begin construction?
Yes.
So, Reni, um, I, I think you're gonna have some paving to do, but I don't know that you, well, you're gonna have to, um, you're talking about filling in that, uh, foundation on the right, so I think you might have some restrictions as far as, um, the weather affecting your construction schedule. Um, what are you going to replace? Are you going to replace the siding, all of it?
Yes, so the roof, the siding is gonna be all brand-new, and then inside, plumbing, electrical, everything.
So you're gonna upgrade all the electrical?
Yeah.
Replace the, um, heating system?
Everything, yeah.
Plumbing system? What's the expected budget?
A hundred and seventy.
Very tight. Have you, uh, so I don't know if you heard the gentleman here earlier, um, but have you, do you know about the new, um, stretch energy code and the insulation requirements underneath it?
No, no.
He, it's, um, it was something that we had raised to him and, um, had, he was saying to us today that, that code had a serious impact on his project and the costs.
Oh, okay.
So I would, um, you know, I, I, I'm sure the, the interim commissioner has, um, because it's new to everybody, so we're all stuck, as, well, I'm...
For the one and two-family homes, it's been out for about a year now.
Okay.
Um, for the commercial projects and larger projects, it's only been out since July.
Yeah.
But the, um, the one and two-family projects have been out for about a year. Um, one question I have, though, speaking of energy, speaking of this, this drawing right here? Does not match with this layout here.
So it, it doesn't, the picture at the end doesn't show the parking? And, um...
Oh, yes, because, um, he forgot at first when he draw the, the plan, and he just did the, um, that I passed around just today, he just did it.
And there aren't any existing plans in here to show what the current layout is, so we can't really tell what the extent of renovation, other than it's a three-family, so I'm assuming they're cutting, they're knocking down the third floor, bringing the roof lower, but what's kind of the extent of the renovation, because this is probably going to have to be very extensive from an energy perspective.
Having visited the property, I believe the burned-out portion is the square that's noted as a deck, so that it, what, there was, that was the portion in the third unit that had burned down, and you're not rebuilding, you're returning, you're turning it into a deck.
Yeah, correct.
Um, and the, uh, what used to be an interior wall and is now an exterior wall, um, on that side is open in several places, and, um, it's gonna need to be reconstructed, but I don't think, I don't think they're pulling it, they're rebuilding that, um,
The action.
Addition, I guess you'd call it, so.
It's a flat roof on it, right? Or there's no roof?
I think there's a hip roof.
There's roof, yeah, on the, on the, on the, yeah.
On the part that wasn't burnt, there is a roof.
No, there's a set of stairs, there's like four stairs, and then there's nothing.
On the, on the house, there's a roof. There's roof.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just a little perplexed that when you look at the roof line, there's like three steps that go nowhere.
Oh, yeah, but if you go inside, there's a whole apartment, second and first floor, uh, first and, and second floor, so we're gonna close it there.
Right, there's two fours, but there's a set of stairs, like three stairs on the roof. So did it used to have a roof, or was it a flat roof?
That's probably...
Flat roof.
And you're gonna put a hip roof on it?
No, we're just gonna replace that roof, we're not doing anything with that, we're just gonna remove that, that was part of the, the unit that burned.
I'm, I'm confused.
Let me see if I can, can I show you a picture?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Maybe I'm missing something. It's a two-story building right now.
Correct, yeah. It used to be three, so that'll half burned, and then let me show you.
Just as a note for the board, if they were to try to restore it to a three-family, they'd have to put sprinklers in, which would substantially increase the cost, so two families.
Economical.
Yeah.
Hold on, no, I can't find it, give me one second.
So while, um, while you're looking, I'm just gonna, uh, note in the zoning ordinance, section one eighty-one point three-three-seven is, uh, reconstruction after catastrophe, and it states that a non-conforming structure may be reconstructed after catastrophe, provided that the owner shall apply for a building permit and start operations for reconstruction within two years, so we're with, within that timeframe, and provided that as reconstructed, there's no, um, no further violation of setbacks um, greater than that existed prior to demolition. And the new yard, side yard setbacks shall be not less than five feet, and I think this is where you run into a problem, because it's so close. In the event that the proposed reconstruction would cause the structure to exceed these limits, a special permit shall be required from the Board of Appeals, and so that is, answers the question of why you are here.
This roof is not this roof. So this is a hip roof. That's why I'm thrown off.
This is a flat roof, yeah.
Right.
So is this what he's doing? Is this what you're doing?
No, no, I'm just gonna replace the roof.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
See, you're gonna replace what's...
I was pretty...
The rolled roof that's on it, you're not gonna add a hip roof to it. Okay, 'cause the plan is indicating that this is going to a hip roof, when you currently have a flat roof.
And he went to the property? Madam Chair, I think I'd like to kind of move towards a continuance, so we can get some plans that really depict what the project is.
Yep, I think I agree.
And if I may, one more thing. The, a question for you, the piece of the building that burnt down and the building that exists, they both have a foundation, right? Can you walk from one to the other?
Right now? Yes.
So, are you gonna pour a foundation?
A wall?
On the, the burnt side?
Foundation wall under where there's, where the, all the framing is burnt out?
No, so, so we're gonna close that, we're gonna replace what's bad and close it.
Right, you're gonna create a new facade. But under that facade, it's all open.
We're gonna create a cement, cement foundation to close it.
A cement wall? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, and then whatever remnants there are of a foundation, you wanna take everything off of the top, including all the wood, right down to the concrete? And build an enormous deck on it?
Yes. Once we fill it, we gotta fill it with dirt, whatever, to bring it up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could ask, if the board is going to give a continuance, that you ask the applicant to come back with an existing conditions and a demo plan, um, for the next hearing, so that all these questions can be further elucidated, and it may be worth having the, the registered design professional here to answer questions.
So, um, it's Mr. Devers that you're working with, and who drew the plans?
Yep.
So, I am, I'm gonna say that the things I'd be looking for, as the building commissioner just said, um, were the, is the existing layout, so a plan that shows the existing layout, what is there right now?
Okay.
What was your other list?
And, and a demolition plan to show what your proposed extent of demolition is, so that the members' questions are very clearly answered.
So, um, a demolition plan would show what is being taken down? What are you, what are you destroying? Um, and, and then, of course, you're gonna need to appropriately dispose of it, so. I would also, um, we're, we're going to need a plan that shows, that states these are the boundaries and these are the measurements, um, because they need to know that you have parking spaces that are the right size and that they fit on the lot.
Okay.
Right?
It may be considered, because the parking table actually has multiple options for the angle of approach, given the, the really sharp turn there, it might be worth considering a, a different angle of approach for the parking instead of a ninety-degree to the building.
So I, is it your opinion that that might improve traffic safety?
It would likely improve traffic safety, yes, just getting, getting into the street instead of cars having to back in and out to get perpendicular to the building. I, I think that having it at an angle towards the building, kind of following the natural flow of the street, is going to be better.
I think you'd still have to back out, though, right?
Yeah, there's no way to avoid backing out, but backing out is allowed in one and two families, but...
Um, okay, so, uh, you know, a comment to the engineer is whether the parking can be angled as, as opposed to straight-on ninety degrees. I, I wanna make sure that you're prepared to undertake this project, so, um, I, I'm gonna ask that you present a budget for what your reconstruction is, um, just so that we can look and see what the plan is, that, and that you've put adequate, you know, funds towards the cost of that. And I particularly want you to investigate what you're gonna have to do with the, with the energy code as far as the insulation goes. I want, I, I want you to know that before you enter into this project and be prepared for it. I don't, as far as I know, there's really not a way to waive it, um, and certainly that wouldn't be under the purview of this board, 'cause it's a building code issue, so. But I, I definitely want you to understand the cost of that as you enter into this project. Okay? Yes?
Just some comments, I was, um, you know, initially pretty impressed at what I thought was going to be the renovation of the project, based on all the plans and everything that was submitted, now, you've kind of enlightened me that it, this is not really even it. I would just like to throw out there, um, you know, this building is burnt out, I think you, you're gonna have some enormous costs that you're not really aware of. I'm not a building commissioner, I do not practice code every day, I can only assume that if you need to put up a foundation wall, it's gonna require footings and all that, so there's some enormity to the, to the project. In, in light of doing it right, for the benefit of the city, um, I might just throw out there, consider doing a duplex versus an up and down, because it takes all these, um, outrigging staircases away from a property that has no setbacks, and, um, really not looking favorably towards just kind of band-aiding the burned-out foundation and throwing a deck on top of it. If you're gonna have to bring in an excavator to, to, to put in a foundation wall, that, you know, that all comes out and it becomes green space for the tenants, you know? So just, just some thought, you know, I get it, you guys wanna come in and, you know, do a, throw some paint on it, make some money and move on, we look at it as a long-term, how do we make it better for the neighborhood? You know? You just gotta work together on that balance.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay. And, and like I said, it's, it's a big project, and we wanna make sure you, you know what you're getting into and, and that you're able to complete it. And hopefully that'll all work out, and we'll have a good project.
It will, thank you.
So, um, we're going to, uh, look at a motion to continue. We've asked you for some things. We have a fairly full December meeting, we're up to ten, and, and Mr. Gallagher has a comment on that.
Yeah, just, just quickly, Madam Chair, and this is just from my own knowledge, um, who actually demolished the first part of the building that was burnt down?
We bought it like that.
You bought it like that, so you don't have any knowledge about who tore it down? Okay, uh, I... And, you know, to go back to Michael's question, um, definitely a concrete wall would need to go down into the basement and quite deep, and there'd be some, a lot, I would imagine a lot of excavating that has to be done to get it down low enough to be to code. I think that's something you really need to focus on, to get an idea of what that's gonna cost as well. And in terms of the plot plan, I guess it's a certified plot plan that they would be looking at, that they would need to get before they come back to us, or...
I, I don't...
I think the commissioner's gonna need something, he said pretty specific.
Before he could give a building's...
Building permit, so it would...
He needs something certified, we might as well just get to that now.
Yeah, it's, it's worth getting, it's worth getting a certified site plan, especially where the instructions for the ZBA ask for one to begin with. And I know Mercedes goes through that, um, that it should have been here, but as a stopgap, I wouldn't issue it if you had given the special permit.
Well, I think the fact...
But I agree, it should be beforehand.
I, I think the fact that there's that engineer's stamp right on it until you read the, you read the fine print is, of course, mission and catching.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Sir, I have your phone, too. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a full meeting in December, which means you might be at the end of December. I, I, I mean, at the end of the meeting in December, again, if we add you to December, and I'm not sure you will be able to get those things to us by December... Sorry? December twelfth is the December meeting. Do you think that you can get those items out of the engineer?
We can try.
It, it's always the hard thing, you know, if I continue to January, you're definitely delayed until January.
Can we have a writing, what we need to be, I mean, what we need to bring over here to get approval?
Yes. But not tonight.
It's not guaranteed approval.
Oh, I'll come back and figure it out.
Well, it's not guaranteed, but... Well, it's not guaranteed, but at least we're gonna try to do our best to bring you what you demand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Request.
When you request.
I'm gonna remind you, this is recorded, the recording is available online, so you can also play back the recording, if you wish.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. So what we do... I'm just gonna look at the agenda for December for a minute.
I think with the holiday, it's probably a bit... It's not kid ourselves.
I agree. It's, it's a very full agenda for December, and I, I really, I think you would have difficulty having everything together by then, and I don't wanna waste your time.
Yeah, last one.
So, I, I think January, which is January 9th? The January 9th meeting is when we'd look to continue. So I would like to, I will need you to come up, so we can have the continuance, okay? And so that is... January 9th? So the extension is to February 13th, but we're gonna schedule you in January. We're just extending all of the deadlines.
Okay.
Okay, and if you don't mind, I, I need the owner to sign. Can you reach and sign right there? Yes, please. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna sign that, too. And so I'd be looking for a motion on the continuance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the continuance to January 9th, 2024?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then that passes, and I, I said aye, if I didn't say aye, I said aye. So we'll see you in January, okay? Good luck. I hope...
See you next year.
Yeah.
Do you understand what we're asking for, 'cause we wanna...
Yeah, yeah, the plot plan?
Want a registered certified plot plan, and please, jump in and help me. Showing the parking, right? Showing the bounds, right? Showing the setbacks.
Yep.
And then, the drawing for the proposed building. We, we would like to have real, actual drawings. 'Cause, 'cause these show a hip-roof building, you know? Give some thought to what we've talked about, about getting rid of that foundation, completely, brass, green space.
That would come in the demolition program, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and then, maybe, look at a duplex versus... Okay? Better project brings you better money.
Yeah, yeah.
We will do it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
If you need any help from us, feel free to reach out to me.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, thank you. Building Department, Building Commissioner?
Excellent.
And Mercedes knows how to reach me.
She's a big help to everybody.
Thank you.
We're gonna try our best.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Calling CBA 2022-17, Jeffrey Summers, 69 High Street, 8:50 p.m. Review of the special permit under Section 181.94 and 181.77 of the Fitchburg zoning code, to operate a sober house pursuant to Section 181.31385, within a reasonable, with a reasonable accommodation in accordance with the Fair Housing Act, located in residential C District. Right, sir, because I have to ask for the minutes, can you state your name and city of residence?
Jeff Summers.
What's your city of residence?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what's your city of residence?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
City of residence?
City of residence.
Malden, Massachusetts.
Thank you. All right, so we are here on the review of this special permit. The last review was in September. And at that point in time, the board decided to continue the review to this date, rendered a decision. Thank you. It's not the one I'm looking for. Looking for the last decision issued.
Mercedes, do you have an extra copy?
Of the decision?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah. Thank you. So at that meeting, again, there was a continuance until this date, and the board reviewed the conditions. I'm going to review the conditions again with you today, and you are welcome to respond. The first condition is that occupancy shall be limited to 12 persons to create a living environment of one person per bedroom, defined as one room with a closet which is not accessible only through another bedroom. Petitioner may seek to increase the number of persons by modification of this special permit if petitioner creates more bedrooms on the premises with such property modifications to be properly permitted and constructed in accordance with all municipal, state, and federal law. Do you have initial response to that?
So, as I was discussing earlier with Attorney Pousatary, this decision is under appeal, so I'm not sure that it's proper to continue with it.
Did you seek an order of stay?
I'm sorry?
Did you seek an order of stay from the court?
Well, it's, it's under appeal.
So there was...
Did you get notice of the appeal?
Oh, yes. The decision that was previously under appeal was dismissed today.
Yeah, through a technicality, yes, and so we started the process again, and there'll be no technicalities this time. But we can discuss it if you think, well, I would defer to Attorney Pousatary. Do you think it's proper to proceed with this?
It's up to the board. I, I, whatever they wanna do.
Well, you're the city solicitor, what do you wanna do?
Whatever the, it's up to the board, I think, do you have two options for you? A gentleman requested a continuance, is that a request?
I'm sorry?
Was there a request for a continuance?
From when, last month?
No, today. I'm trying to understand what you're requesting.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
What are you asking the board to do today?
I, I didn't invite myself here. I, I, I was asked to come here, so I'm not asking them to do anything. But I'm, I know that the decision that was given to the city clerk on November 7th was appealed in Superior Court, and it was given back to the city clerk. And so, I think it's proper to wait for that case to be adjudicated in Superior Court.
Question? Madam Chair, just for clarification?
Yes.
Why, refresh me on why we continued this?
We continued this pending the resolution of the initial appeal, which had a motion to dismiss pending before it. Today, the court rendered a decision and dismissed that appeal.
So we continued it for a specific purpose? And today, the court made a decision? Okay. I would like to proceed with the review.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Did you wanna...
So the occupancy said...
Put that to a vote, to all the members?
Sir, I, I'm just gonna remind you, discussion is through the chair. Discussion is through the chair. The occupancy shall be limited to 12 persons. Do you have a specific response to that?
Yes, I do.
What is that?
I feel that, and that's what I am in court appealing. I feel that that is a racist decision on the board's part, and I come to that conclusion because since 1955, 69 High Street, Fitchburg, Massachusetts, has been used as a nursing home, convalescent home, veterans hospice, and each time, it always had double occupancy. That is not up for dispute, that is a fact. Your records show it in your City of Fitchburg jacket. And so, why would this board, all of a sudden, after four previous white owners, you had no problem with double occupancy at that time? And so, the first black owner in this house's history, all of a sudden, coincidentally, you say single occupancy. Can you understand how I would think that's a racist policy?
So you bought the house in approximately 2020?
You understand that? I'm asking you a question.
The board, this purpose of this meeting is to ask the...
All right, so you asked me a question, that's my response. Do you have another question?
Yes, I do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we continue, I made a comment about wanting to proceed. I'd like to also hear from the other board members, if they wanna proceed with the, with the review. I just asked that.
Mr. Byrne, your thoughts on proceeding with the review? Are you in favor or not in favor?
Well, I look at it this way. If Mr. Summers is going to re-establish his appeal, we're doing for naught, anyway, we're wasting time. Let him do his, let him do his appeal, and let us have a review after.
We're here for a review on a special permit that we issued. And we're here to just simply review the conditions that were part of the special permit. Anything else is outside this board's purview, as I would see it as a board member.
So...
All right, if, if that's the way you feel, and that's the way Brian feels, then let's go for it, then. I, you know, I, I would always say, if there's pending litigation, but...
Right now, there isn't.
There isn't, he just said it.
Well, there is.
An application may have been made, but right now, we're sitting here as a board to review the special permit.
Has been submitted.
Well, I have it right here, it has been filed.
So, the decision that was appealed was the decision to continue the review?
Fine, let's do it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, any other comment?
No, that's fine.
All right. So, you purchased the prox, the property in approximately 2020, correct?
That is correct.
And you purchased it from the Disabled American Veterans Association?
Yes.
Okay. You purchased that in your own name first, and then transferred it over to your entity, Jeffrey's House Inc., right?
That is correct.
Did you view the deed?
Sorry, I would ask that you speak...
Did you view the deed when you, when you bought the property? Did you view the deed? Did you look at the deed when you bought the property?
Did I look at the deed?
Yes.
When I bought the property?
Yes.
I've seen the deed.
So it came from a nonprofit corporation, right? The Disabled American Veterans?
Well, it was from Leslie Lightfoot.
Okay, who was Leslie Lightfoot?
She was the owner of the property.
Have you met her in person?
I have. Have you?
Have you met any of the other owners of the property back to 1955?
I've researched all of them, yes, and they're all white. Is that your question?
Well, I'm asking how you determined that.
I re, I did research on them. It's like I know things about you, it was pretty easy to find out.
Their race was public record?
Absolutely. Did, did you think they were black?
I don't know any of those persons.
Well, it's laughable.
And so, attached to the deed, there was the certificate of occupancy, right?
I'm sorry?
There was the certificate of occupancy that had been last issued to the Disabled American Veterans Home, that was attached to the deed.
There was, yes, it was dated April 1st, 2020, signed by the previous building commissioner, Mark Barbador.
And what was the occupancy that was listed on it?
14.
So when you brought the property, there was an occupancy of 14 people listed. And have, you've heard through testimony of the former building commissioner that that was for 12 residents and two staff? You've heard that, correct?
I have, I have heard that, yes.
Okay. How many people are still there right now?
So, right now, there are 22.
So, that was the same number when the special permit was issued, right? Same number of occupants?
That is. And so I, I would like to know if, if you knew, or if this board knew, 'cause you asked me about the number of occupants when I purchased the property. The reason that the third floor wasn't used by any of the previous occupants is because Massachusetts law prevents nursing homes or convalescent homes from having occupants on the third floor, because they are physically disabled, and in the case of a fire or other emergency, they cannot exit the building. That is the only reason. And none of my people are physically disabled. So, when I had architect...
Didn't you have somebody attend the very first hearing, who was wheelchair-bound?
No.
I, I distinctly remember that. It was a very nice gentleman.
He, he might've been in here in my favor, but he was not living in that house, so I don't have anyone that is physically disabled. So, as I was saying, when architect Brent Heinzler did his report, which included the third floor, it showed that there was no building-related reason why the third floor can't be occupied. And we have made use of it. There's, there's no reason that it can't be occupied, and, and you guys don't have a reason, just because you're just like, 'cause I said so.
But the, at the time that you purchased the property, the certificate of occupancy was, did not include any occupants on the third floor? Right?
For a nursing home, correct. I'm not running a nursing home.
I just had a question, 'cause I'm walking into this fresh, and I apologize. My name's Felix Zemmel.
Yes, I'm sorry?
I'm the acting building commissioner for the city.
Sorry, what is your name?
My name is Felix Zemmel. I'm the acting building commissioner. I'm the acting building commissioner for the city, and I'm just walking into this. So this is my first sight. I'm looking at this.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you as well. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what sounds like quite a, quite a history here. And I'm hearing you're saying third floor wasn't, and I hear what you're saying, that's probably because of DPH rules. It's not a building code thing. It's, it's more likely DPH or Elder Affairs who regulate the nursing homes and convalescent homes.
Correct.
More than building code. But my question is, what was the third floor? Did you, like, what did you do to make it so that occupants could go up to the third floor?
Zero.
So the rooms were already there?
Yes.
So no renovations whatsoever?
Not one. It's simply a case, and it's just a case of this board never looking or never asking. It was simply a case of because that was a nursing home, Massachusetts law prohibits incapacitated residents to be on a third floor, and you can understand why.
And I, and I understand, and I think it's a DPH, a DPH thing or, or Elder Affairs, whoever it was. So I hear that. I just, it was from my own background why I was asking that question.
It's a good question that they never asked.
So you're, you're basing that statement on the opinion that was offered by Mr. Heinzler in the.
I'm sorry?
You're basing your statement regarding the third floor and why it was never used on the opinion that was offered by Mr. Heinzler in that report?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Then that's based on your personal knowledge?
Is that your question?
That's a question.
My answer is no. Do you want to know what I'm basing it on?
What's the basis of your knowledge on that?
I'm basing it on the jacket of 69 High Street from Fitchburg City Hall that I went through. It's probably 300 pages, and I found the documents in the jacket.
Mm-hmm.
That rest at City Hall, you can read them tomorrow.
Okay. So I would imagine that between our original meeting and now, you've had people come and go because that just happens, right? You've had residents.
I have a lot of longstanding tenants.
Mm-hmm. But you've had some that have left and some new people that have entered?
Well, since our last meeting, I have had 33 Garnett Street reopened, so there's new people there.
I'm asking about, did you have any residents at 69 High Street leave since July of 2022?
I'd have to check my records. I'm not sure.
Do you recollect whether you have any new residents at 69 High Street since July of 2022?
Yeah, that's the same question. I said I'd have to check my records.
Have you issued any notices to quit?
So previously, I did, yes.
On 69 High Street?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And were those, did those persons leave?
They were for the third floor, and I, I did clear out the third floor. I had it clear for a long time until you didn't respond to the last one. And then I rightfully thought that my request was constructively granted when you took more than three months to answer. And that's, that's when I reoccupied it.
So between July of 2022 and Feb, so in July, you reported us to there, there was 22 people. But between July and of 2022 and February of 2023, you vacated the third floor of the building?
I did vacate it, and the city came and inspected it. It was empty, yes.
And then you reoccupied it?
After you didn't respond to the, yes. After the request was constructively granted, I reoccupied it, yes.
So have you made any other attempts to comply with that condition?
Of the 12 people?
Of the 12 people.
I did not, since, since the case was dismissed today, you mean?
Since July of 2022, have you made any other attempts to comply?
Well, we were, it was, it was being litigated, and the case was dismissed today.
Mm-hmm.
So I just got notice of that just now.
So is it your intention to comply with that condition?
I want to follow the law and the rules.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Going to move on to the next condition?
Just a question for clarification.
Please go right ahead.
You made mention that there was a possibility for notice, for constructive grant. Was notice made, written notice made with regards to that by you to the city?
What is your question?
You had mentioned that there was a potential for a constructive grant.
Yes.
Did you make written notice to the city with regard to?
Yes.
And that's the case that was just dismissed?
So we're back on conditions, right? We're going to go through the conditions?
We're back on conditions. Christine is looking for a piece of paper again.
What are the conditions, please?
Yes. I just, you just gave me that decision. I opened it up, and it has since disappeared. I clearly blamed it on you, Mercedes, who might need. All right. Second condition. The kitchen to be upgraded to commercial standards, which is generally defined as the installation of kitchen appliances in good working order, which are sufficient in size and number to service the residents on the premises and of durable quality such as those intended for use in a commercial application. What is the general response you have to that condition?
So you have changed your definition of commercial kitchen since our last meeting, and since you recertified it on November 7th, you have changed that. But my response to that is exactly as the last response on the last condition. I feel that it is a racist condition only put on me. The other previous occupants since 1955, all four white, all four of them white, they had no condition of a commercial kitchen. They were serving the same population in double occupancy rooms. They had a regular standard kitchen, as do I. Why does Jeffrey Summers, the black guy, have to have a commercial kitchen? As far as all the appliances, they're all up to date. They're the same as the appliances in your kitchen.
So it's, it's like a single-family home kitchen?
It's the same as your kitchen.
And so you acknowledge, and by the way, this hasn't changed since the initial decision. But there's a definition.
I can show you the last one. I have it within my folder.
Definition of the condition be upgraded to commercial standards. And then we put in a definition of that because at discussion at the hearing, you might recall that we were not looking for a restaurant kitchen to be installed. So certainly.
You put "commercial kitchen." I, I come from a background of a commercial. A commercial kitchen consists of a three-bay sink, sink. It consists of a grease trap. It consists of an ancil system. You, you shouldn't have put "commercial kitchen."
If you actually read the decision that was written and given to you.
Shouldn't have put "commercial kitchen."
You would read the definition in there, and you would know what the standard was that was being looked for. We were looking for a number of appliances that were sized to service the people that were in the residence.
It says "commercial kitchen."
It doesn't stop at staying "commercial kitchen."
I'm sorry?
You need to continue reading.
Yes, I did.
You can't stop in the middle of the sentence. The, having read this definition of the commercial kitchen, do you still believe that this is a unreasonable standard?
I do. I have read the jacket for 69 High Street. As I said, it's over 300 pages, and none of those pages since 1955 has ever been a requirement of a commercial kitchen. And I, I, I can't wait to get this case into court. Because MCAD, their definition, and it's a high bar. They say someone from the protected class, i.e. a black person, they have to show how someone from the non-protected class, i.e. a white person, was treated different. It's usually a high bar to show because you have to show the exact same circumstances but a different outcome. This is the exact same circumstances. This is a test case. Same address, same house, same room size. The room sizes haven't changed. Why did they need, why could they do double occupancy, but I can't? Why did they have a regular kitchen, but I have to have commercial?
Have you?
And you can't explain that.
Have you purchased?
It's only to do with race.
Have you purchased any kitchen appliances?
Yes.
Since you've resigned?
Yes, I have.
So what did you purchase?
Freezer, two refrigerators, and a new stove. Should have never said "commercial."
The third condition is that renovations are to be completed within 12 months from the date of this decision. I'm going to state that I think the appropriate interpretation of this is to go from the February filing date and for there to be 12 months from that date allowed. Have you taken any steps to complete any renovations, including any increase in the number of bedrooms?
The number of bedrooms are, are already sufficient, so there's been renovations there, yes. There's continuous renovations going on.
Any renovations of the kitchen?
Such as what?
Any renovations of the kitchen?
It's been painted. There's been, you know, new appliances. What, what type of renovations are you looking for?
That's what I had just asked.
Well, you have to be more specific. The kitchen looks pretty good.
The applicant's outstanding fines are to be paid within 12 months from the date of this decision. So there are a number of fines outstanding. We have, of course, the $5,800 in fines from the building department. And then we have the fines from the contempt action. And at this point in time, Attorney Pollock, if you don't mind, could you just give us a brief synopsis of the status of the housing court case in the contempt order that was On 69 High Street specifically?
Hello. There's a contempt order issued on April 28th, 2022, in which the, Mr. Summers was ordered to pay $7,125 to the city and attorney's fees and costs. That has not been paid. He was ordered to pay $11,650 for fines for the period between September 7th, 2021, and the date of the order. He has not paid that. He was ordered to reduce the number of occupants to 12. He has not done that. He was ordered to provide the city with copies of all of his notices to quit and summary process, process summonses to the occupants he intended to remove to comply with the order. He did not do that. He was ordered to provide the city with docket numbers for the summary process matters within seven days of filing. He did not do that. He was ordered to obtain the appropriate licenses, and I think that's what's really relevant. He was ordered to, and so that would be the lodging house license. He has not done that. He has not gone in front of the licensing board, the, for the City of Fitchburg. He does not have an occupancy permit. And I think one of the most important things that fell within this was that he hasn't complied with making the property safe, the biggest one being the back stairway, which is the second egress for the third floor originally. And I know he spoke about his architect that he had review it. The court found that the architect, I'm going to quote right from the court. Mr. Summers retained the services of B. Thomas Heinzler Associates, Inc. to assist them in having the premises examined per the court order. Mr. Heinzler, and I'm going to skip a few things and get to the point. Mr. Heinzler agreed that the violations cited by the City of Fitchburg were accurate. Mr. Heinzler submitted a 19-page report to the City of Fitchburg. He testified that the repairs to the premises were not performed in accordance with the plans. And that really, I believe, we've got a back staircase that they agreed he could take out the bottom part. When they took out the bottom part, they did it, but they did it in a way that now required that there be security or safety glass against one of the bottom provisions there. That wasn't done. The bottom line is, and I'm not an architect and I'm not one of the building inspectors, but those stairs are not in compliance. They weren't in compliance then. They're not in compliance now.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Am I correcting recalling that there was also a $50 a day of continuing fine?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Yes, there is a, there, I believe that there is $50 per day until such time that all items on an order of September 7th, 2021, have been completed. I will also note to you that this case began, oh, no, this is not one of those cases for him. This case in 2021, there was another inspection notice that was given by one of the departments in the city, and they asked that all of those be completed. My understanding, I believe, I gotta, I do have to say honestly, I think the stairs were part of it. I can't say honestly because I don't have that inspection in front of me. But I do know that those stairs, we have been, the city has talked to Mr. Summers about repeatedly.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not in compliance with the building code. And again, as I know, because you are the zoning board, the building codes change, and when you change owners or purposes, you, you have to come into compliance. The bottom line is those stairs in the back are not in compliance with the building code.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So I, looking at that $50 a day fine, I had roughly calculated that there would be an additional 30, $39,000? But $50 a day for over a year accumulated on that. In addition, and I'm just sticking with the fines on this point, when you were before us for your initial review hearing in September, I asked you about the $5,800 in building fines, and you stated that you didn't know what they were and didn't recall them. When we had the initial special permit hearing at the May meeting, you did acknowledge receiving them. And then in time for the July meeting, you submitted a document dated July 11th, 2022, that you had signed stating that you owed the City of Fitchburg $5,800, and then agreed to make a payment for them over 12 months, the first payment being $487, and then $483 each month until the 12 months have been completed. The building commissioner acknowledged you had paid the $487. Have there been any further payments made?
I don't recall. So with that item, it's the same as this. So the building commissioner signed off on that building on August, I'm sorry, April 1st, 2020. The building was perfect. Then after I bought it, the building was a catastrophe. And all of those fines are based on that. It just is, it comes down in the same order as the same racism that I've been facing. It was fine when the white person owned it, but then when I buy it, the building's a disaster. And then after Attorney Pollock and former Commissioner Barbador were successful in closing my 33 Garnett building, they wanted to get right over to 69 High Street to inspect it. When I denied the inspection, there happened to be a, an emergency, and an ambulance was, an ambulance was called.
Subject to a court order on?
And it just so happened to be that Attorney Pollock's husband was the firefighter that reported the damage.
You've been subject to a court order on this for some time.
Saw that happen.
It was an order under.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Then maybe you should stop talking and listen.
I, I, I thought I was responding.
You weren't. You've been subject to a court order, and a court order of contempt for this for some period of time, well over a year.
And, and I did appeal that. I did appeal that order. That order is under appeal.
That order was issued by Judge Carvajal down at the.
It is under appeal.
That's an order issued by the court.
It is under appeal.
That is an order issued by a court. You issued, you filed four notices of appeal, and then you never filed the appeal document. Those are stale appeals. There's specifically no order of stay in that action. There is specifically no order of stay in that action, none whatsoever. And in the last Superior Court case, you asked the court for a stay, and they denied you. I'm going to move on to the next condition. The applicant shall reduce the number of occupants to no more than 12 persons within 12 months.
We have the document that says 14. Do you want me to pull out the document that says 14? Because I do have two staff members.
I don't.
Where does it, where do you get 12 if the document says 14?
And then the review date, the building health and fire department inspections shall be completed annually. I believe that there was an unsatisfactory result from that. And then the last thing is you've received a November 9 notice of violation of an unsafe structure, again, from the building commissioner.
The last, his last act before leaving, huh? He wanted to get me, huh? His last act before retiring.
The stairs, again, being an unsafe exit. In addition to that, you're housing people on the third floor without a safe means of egress. Two of the bathroom fans were non-functional, and one of them trips the circuit breaker when the wall switch is pressed. This is a fire hazard.
Those are fixed.
You have also begun housing residents in a room without the building code-required smoke detector. Just in case the interim commissioner hasn't seen that.
Thank you. I have not seen it.
Can we see how much that the contempt that the building commissioner had for me? His last act before leaving, he said, "Let me get Summers." And he leaves that day, but he's got to write that up. Ridiculous.
So, Mr. Summers, I had a very nice moment with you at one moment, at one meeting, where you and I agreed that disabled persons deserve safe, decent, adequate housing. And I was very appreciative that you agreed with me on that. This board has been concerned throughout this process because of the history that you've had, because of the presentation that you've made. The persons that you house, and I believe that you said something on this at one point. These are very vulnerable people. It is difficult for them to find other housing, and, you know, that may be because of their particular condition. It is difficult for them to find other housing because of cost. It's difficult for anybody to find housing lately. But these are persons who are not traditional tenants. They do not have the rights of a traditional tenant. They do not have the means to seek alternative housing easily. These are persons who can easily be taken advantage of by an unscrupulous landlord.
Which is not me.
There is certainly, and I am very familiar with specific incidents of that among sober houses, including people being vacated without notices to quit because they had failed a test. And that's a standard provision within your agreement. I understand why, but these people are not within the means to protect themselves from that. If they have an issue with the conditions of the property and they complain about it, what are they going to do when they need to find other housing?
Is that rhetorical?
That is the concern, at least as one board member, that I have and continue to have with the operation of this very needed facility, providing a very needed service to people who need it.
When, when former Commissioner Bob Adaro came by the house two weeks ago, he commented how impressed he was at how nice the house looked. And it's in very good condition. It's not in squalor. The people are not living in squalor. They're not living in overcrowded conditions. It's plenty of room.
So I know that at one point you repaired the fence, and I very much appreciate that. This board's also, and I just want to remind you, the board's given you numerous accommodations, including waiving any parking issue. We've given 12 months for compliance. We had a reapplication issue, and we waived the fee for that reapplication. I think this board has tried to work with you. I think the board still wishes to work with you to make this safe, decent housing. But you've continued to operate since this time. I don't see any evidence of attempts at compliance. You haven't recorded the special permit, right?
I did apply for it, yes.
You didn't record the special permit with the registry of deeds.
Recorded? The, the, the application that was granted because of your tardy responses, which one are you referring to?
The decision in February, that was filed in February. You didn't record. Have you recorded any decision with the registry?
The one that I disagree with?
You can just say yes or no.
I'm saying, are you asking me if I recorded?
I'm telling you, I've looked.
Are you asking me if I recorded the grant that I, that I appealed and disagree with?
Yeah. You haven't recorded it, right?
Well, if I disagree with it, why would I record it?
Because in order to have the special permit be active, and I'm going to remind you that it states this directly on the decision, you need to record it with the registry of deeds.
I thought you needed to record it.
That's not what it says. That's not ever been said to you. But you've continued to operate. So I don't have any more questions, but I would let any board member who wishes to. Ms. Pollock, if you would like to make a statement before Mr. McGlaughlin's question, go ahead.
I would just like to make one statement. With regards to Mr. Summers' allegations against me, he makes them continually, I deny them, but that's okay. But with regards to my husband, he's made these allegations before, and as I said in court before, and as I've told Mr. Summers, my husband was not at the incident where the ramp, the handicap ramp that leads from the building up to the street above that they were trying to evacuate one of his residents on began to buckle while the police and fire department were on it. My husband wasn't there. My husband's had nothing to do with this. My husband's a very non-political person. He knew nothing about this, and he wasn't there. So I don't appreciate his name being brought into it, but I wanted the record to be clear. He wasn't there, and that was not why this was brought. It was brought because the first responders who were there notified the Board of Health and notified the building department that while they were trying to transport somebody off of this ramp, it began to buckle, and they thought it was unsafe. That is what brought this building to our attention.
Yeah, your husband was there.
Your attorney, Pollock. Mr. McGlaughlin, you have a question?
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank the applicant for all his input. The attorneys, thank you for reading into the history from the courts. Ready to, you know, move to a vote with regards to the review. Yeah, well, let's close and discuss. I don't know if we technically close or.
I don't, we don't need to close because we are, this is a review. This is not a public hearing. This is a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing. So that being said, as I look at this, I want to be mindful of what the board has the ability to do. There were 12 months given for compliance on certain items. And I legitimately don't think that 12 months is up until we reach the one-year date for recording of the decision with the city clerk.
12 months from February or 12 months from when?
The recording date of the decision with the city clerk, which is February of 2023. I don't have the specific date.
Okay.
So there are a number of conditions here that are not complied with. And I think we have expressed, the permit holder expressed that he would be compliant with the law, but has not taken any steps towards. However, he has continued to operate without recording the special permit. The special permit is not valid unless it's recorded. And I think that's a violation of the zoning code, which is what we're here to enforce. My suggestion on this, and remember that the board may only recommend imposition of a fine or make a finding on which it's based. It cannot actually impose the fine. The building commissioner must impose the fine. So I am suggesting that we make a finding that at a minimum, due to the lack of recording of the special permit, that the permit holder is in violation of the zoning code and recommend that a fine be imposed by the building commissioner. And my suggestion would be $300 for each week for a period of four weeks. And if there was noncompliance thereafter, move to the $300 a day. I welcome any other comment on this suggestion from any other board member.
Is that what we're trying to do, is just fine me out of business? Fines from the court, fines from the building commissioner, fines from this zoning board? Is that, is that what we're going to do?
I don't think I.
Continue to fine me. You're going to get me out one way or another, aren't you?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
He has, he has no respect for the conditions that we put on. He keeps saying, "No, no, I don't agree with it." He never, he never went forward with the, with the application. Never brought it over to the deeds, the registry of deeds.
And doesn't hold the Board of Health license.
Just say, "Forget it." This is an interesting dynamic. There's no special permit, right? I mean, we've granted it.
We've granted it.
It hasn't been recorded.
No.
So unless you've recorded, you can't move forward with it.
But given the 12-month timeline for compliance, an action to revoke based on noncompliance with those conditions.
Well, but if it's 12 months, it's February 24, correct? Because we're talking about, we're still in 2023, so it was February, we're talking, it hasn't been 12 months. It's February.
I agree. I agree. It has not been 12 months.
Okay.
I agree with that. Yes. Welcome your comment, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think it's more, what I wanted to say was clarification of what I believe the chair is saying. Differentiating between the 12-month period, which she seems to agree with you that your 12-month compliance period isn't up, so they can't revoke the special permit. But I also think she's saying, and I tend to agree from my experience in zoning enforcement, that technically you're ongoing noncompliance because you never recorded the special permit. So the special permit technically was never granted because it was never recorded. And I defer to the solicitor on, on that, on that interpretation. So because of the fact that you never recorded it, you're technically in noncompliance from the day, from day one until now because you, from the day that this was issued or recorded with the city clerk until now is all a noncompliance of that one, of the fact that you're not meeting zoning. I'm reading, I think, Section 181-912, the enforcement provisions of the zoning ordinance, specifically about that. Had you recorded it, this would be a moot issue because, and you could then appeal it and record the new decision if, if you want on the appeal. But that way, at least your rights were preserved. You had a legal permit. Right now, you don't have that permit, so you're technically.
No, thank you. It'll be recorded tomorrow.
Okay. So.
You want a motion?
If you could email me a copy of that recorded document, just so that we have it.
Give me your card, please.
And I'm going to.
You'll need some type of, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. May I respond to the building commissioner?
Please do.
He'll need a certified copy if he wants to do record it.
Yeah, no, I, I know, but I want to, at least in the interim, I want to see that I have a book and page printed while we're waiting for the certified copies. That'll take a few days.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you.
I'd like a motion first on a finding that the, that the permit holder has not recorded the special permit and therefore is in current violation of the zoning code. Can I have a motion on that?
Show that motion.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And second, I'd be looking for a motion on the recommendations regarding fining to the building commissioner. Do I have a motion?
One more time?
A motion to recommend the fining of $300 per week for four weeks, followed by $300 per day until compliance is achieved.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair, before.
Thank you. And I just want to be sure you understand that's a recommendation. I understand that you are the building commissioner and the one authorized to issue the fine.
Thank you.
Do we need a finding with regards to the court order?
The court order? So, so this is what I'd like to do, because I do believe we need to continue until the February hearing. I would like there to be a motion for that continuance with a finding that at the current time, the permit holder is not in compliance with conditions one through five of the special permit. Do I have a motion on that finding?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
When was the decision signed?
You mean the one today or February? I mean, there was one yesterday.
Let me, let me clarify who I'm talking to. Talking to Madam Chair.
I thought you were talking to me.
Stamps.
You looking for the date of the court order?
February 7, but the.
The court order?
The court order is different. So February 7 was the filing.
I'm asking about, we gave him a year, so I want to just make sure that when we put him on for a continuance, we've exceeded the year.
February 7 is the filing date of the decision.
So February 13 meeting will work, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. The date of the court order was, I believe, of April of 2022. That was the contempt order. That being said, unless there is anything further to offer, I'm going to ask that we close this matter for now. Okay. That's the last item on our agenda for tonight, and it is 10:36. I'm going to look for.
Did we make a continuance until February?
We did make a continuance.
Until February 13, 2024.
For clarification. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So to be clear, we are continued until February 13, 2024 on that matter.
Do we have any further business?
None tonight, and I would ask for a motion.
Do we have any further business?
No.
We're giving you some time. Motion, we close.
Thank you. I will second that, and I'm sure everybody is in favor.
Get that?
The meeting is ended.
I don't have a business to part with.
Thank you, everybody, for attending and have a good night.